The School Board Work Session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the School Board Work Session begins in one minute.
Now call the December 5th, 2022 Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices and remove your hats to avoid disturbing others. I now ask the School Board Attorney to explain the rules for this work session.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you. We will now begin this work session with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board. Just great to see you all back here safely from Tampa, and I have no other briefing items today. Thank you.
Terrific. So, the focus of today's work session is on our policy updates. While we have continued to call them the Neola Policies, what we will say is they are the Marion County School Board Policies that Neola has worked with us to ensure that we are in compliance with statute and any changes that were needed required by that. So, I guess at this point, Attorney Powers, would you like to help walk us through our updates?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. During the course of the time that we were working on putting our initial policies into place, which was completed in July of this year, there were a number of, the law continued on. So, there were policies through updates that were, updates to policy that would be required under Administrative Code, under Florida statute, and under federal law. So, during that period of time, which encompassed over two years, those updates kept coming in. Well, rather than going back each single time and trying to update something we had just talked about, we collected those updates and we consolidated them together. And those are now the subject of 185 policies that need updates to be brought into compliance. Most of these policies, these policies have previously been adopted by the Board and have some alterations. Now, in the packet that's available online there, there are red and green, and Teri's going to pull that up in a moment, there are red and green edits to certain policies. All of these edits were identified by Neola or by staff as being critical edits to describe what it is that we do within the district and also to explain what is needed under Florida law, under federal law, or under Administrative Code. So, throughout this process, what you should know is that each of these policies has been vetted by staff. It has been looked at by Neola. There may be formatting changes which need to be made along the way, in which case if that's the point, if that is the case, those will go back to Neola for formatting changes because they, only they can control the actual formatting. As to content, you'll see on each either green edits or red deletions, which would indicate an updated edit. Some are as simple as, you can see that this hasn't changed much, but the one that's on your screen here, which is found in School Board Packet 004, on the PDF packet that you're looking at, and that had simply, a meeting called by the Board Chairman has been edited to read "Board Chair," and Neola 2021 as opposed to 2019, because that's the most recent update. So, as we go through each of these sections, you'll note that there are policy sections at the beginning of the packet which indicate the 000, which is bylaws, through 1,000 administration, 2,000 program, 3,000 instructional staff, 4,000 support staff, 5,000 students, 6,000 finances, 7,000 property, 8,000 operations, and 9,000 community relations. Each of these have been provided in advance for your review, and as we go through, we'll start with the section in the thousands, the 000s, and we will go through and identify if there's any of these edits which have been proposed and which staff has reviewed that the Board wishes to know more about, wishes to have further input on, or wishes to discuss any particular item located within that statute. When completed, these policies will then be advertised for public hearing and adoption as our, as updates to our, as final updates to our policy. So, starting there before we begin, does anybody have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Chair. Go ahead. Thanks. In the future, how are we going to keep up with this?
Well, in the future, it should become significantly easier. This reflects, over a period of approximately two and a half years, a number of updates that were made. So, many of these policies, for example, had four updates to the policy within that period of time. That's why we have a number that is so large, 185, because this literally is all the updates needed for everything we've got right now. Now, as law changes, there will be small updates to policy which will be much more routine. We may have, in three or four, six months' time, we may have a half a dozen that we need to do instead of 185. At that point, then, as a routine matter of adoption of policy updates, either because Neola has suggested it, or because staff has identified a particular need, we can bring those to the Board, and they would encompass a much lesser amount of time than what we're doing here.
Great. And I'm just wondering what the trigger will be for that. Would it come from your office to say, "Hey, we've got..."
Yes, ma'am. And Neola routinely issues and notifies us of updates that they have, as well as staff calls us and says, "Hey, we've got this issue and policy that we would like to propose a change for," at which case that goes to their individual departments and through the Superintendent and then through to me to make those edits to propose to the Board.
Awesome. Looking forward to staying on top of it.
Dr. James?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if we could get even on a quarterly schedule, maybe so that we just know that, like Nancy said, to be prepared for, every quarter we take a look at it so that we're not tasked with such a tremendous amount.
Eight years. Sure. So, and that actually helps answer my question, Attorney Powers, because I was curious as to why some of the policies, even with all the changes, still have a date with Neola of 2020 or 2021. And I think you've answered that in that while this Board was going through the policy update process that took a two and a half year time span, the legislature continued to make updates year after year after year. So, while I'm not certain that a quarterly update might be necessary, and the only reason is because, once we get these done, legislative session is late this year, they'll be finished in May, it would be my belief that Neola would probably have the updates to policy that are needed by second, by third or fourth quarter. We would do this again next December with minimal changes based on what the legislature would be approving this upcoming year. Is that your understanding?
In that example, yes. Then hypothetically, we would have situations in which there may be administrative code changes, and that's the only update sitting out there for three months' time. If that's the only update that's sitting out there, and it is not a critical update, then it may wait for a companion to bring along to the party in order to update them all at once. In other words, it is not my goal unless one is a crucial update for us to be, every other work session, having a sub-Neola session to deal with that. However, we wouldn't be also letting those go on for very long. Most of these updates are written with the most recent legal changes or court cases in mind, and then by the time, and most of those allow for us to have the policy year within which to update those. So, we do have, for example, one update that's already pending with most recent changes that's come along since these were advertised, because the fact is, we have to advertise this as rulemaking and development. It has to be placed in the advertisement for some length of time beforehand, and then we've got 28 days to public hearing and then adoption. So, if, for example, one came in two weeks ago as a new proposed update, we would need to determine whether that update needed to be met about and gone over right then, or at, say, a three to six month mark, or whether to incorporate it as part of a resolution in the meantime, which we've done in cases where we find ones that have critical need.
Okay. Are there any other procedure questions before we get started? Okay, terrific. So, do we want to take the 00000000 section first? And Board, if you have any specific questions about the bylaws as you saw them?
And let me say, any edits at this point are welcome. That includes, we've reviewed, but there could be scriveners there, updates, just things that, you know, a word is misspelled or something like that. If that's the case, we've tried to catch all those, but certainly there's a lot of volume here, so we can fix those as well. But if there's content, you may have questions about why this content is there, or what the nature of the update is, or the reason for it, and I stand ready to answer those questions as well.
Perfect. Board, and I also say Dr. Gullett, because I know she's good at picking up on scriveners along the way, do you have any questions specific to the bylaws? Most of what I saw are statute changes, specific, I'll use an example, Bylaw Number 0144 now includes that Board members can only serve for consecutive 12 years. That's new, that's new legislation as of 2022. Those are the majority of the things that I saw in these areas, but if you all have any questions about them?
Straightforward to me.
I mean, I'm good in bylaws, if you all are. We can move on to the 1,000 section.
Absolutely. And I should say, as we continue to go through, that most of these, having been looked at and proposed by Neola based on legislative changes, and also having been reviewed by staff, that may make it a bit easier, because most of these are already ones that, that should not be particularly controversial, but they may be. We'll see.
Okay, moving on to the 1,000 sections, which is our administration section. Board, do you have any questions specific to this section? And I know, Dr. James and Ms. Conrad, I know that this is the first time you're really, really delving into some of these. So, the three of us have seen these before, but we certainly want to give you the opportunity. If there's any questions you have along the way, please don't hesitate to ask.
I will also say that as to some of these, for example, 1122 and other policies that were related to nondiscrimination and anti-harassment, we did adopt the language that had previously, on multiple occasions, been adopted by the Board, as opposed to the original language, which was a little bit garnered from a number of sources. So, the Board each time had come to agree on the terms that it wished to use in those 12 or 13 policies that we had, and so I just incorporated those as well.
Thank you. I noticed that as well. You guys probably picked up on that. And we could elaborate more if you want to know what the recommended version was versus the one that we adopted, but we, as a Board, were comfortable in the language, the way it reads, in the general statement, as opposed to the one that Neola had recommended to us. So, I don't know if you guys have any other questions about the 1,000 section?
I do. I have one question.
Okay, go for it, Ms. Conrad.
I want to know where we are. The Board will develop and implement a written veterans recruitment plan, and I know that there has-
Which policy?
Policy number?
And I'll look, I'll call out the page number as I find it.
Which policy is it?
Code, under code, 1120.
1120.
1120, yeah. That's it.
And I have heard discussion previously about that program. I just wanted to know where we were in finalizing that.
And that's page 42, and it's 47 of the PDF. So, if you're just going PDF. And I'm hearing some little reminders on the, I don't know that they're picking up the microphones, but if you could mute your audio on your laptops, all of us, I just had to do that myself, because it's giving us little reminders. So, the audio on your laptop in the lower right corner, mute that. I don't know if it's picking up in the microphones, but just in case it is, I'm hearing the little chimes, multiple times around. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. I know I have to do that often. When you're watching something on your laptop and then you're in a meeting, you're like, "Oh, wait, I didn't mute it." But that was a good question, Ms. Conrad, about the recruitment plan. I think that's a procedural question. Dr. Gullett, I don't know if you have an update on?
Which?
I'm sorry. It's, pay, it's, yes, 1122, and, or excuse me, 1120.11, sorry. 1120.11, is that the policy number?
I got you.
Okay, perfect. And it's the last paragraph on that policy about the recruitment plan.
Madam Chair, I could answer that from my, from the operations side. Yes, I did speak with Ms. Morant, our Executive Director for Human Resources, and I know that she is, the team is already working on the procedure. They're just waiting for any policy updates here, and I believe she has spoken with Attorney Powers as well.
That is correct. So, there is, there are plans already for this update to be made. This update indicates that we will have such a plan, and then Ms. Morant has already, with Human Resources, has already been looking into it and been making modifications that will have to be done with our next batch, because these weren't, the additional plans weren't advertised, so.
And what's our timeline on that? We have until?
We would have until July of the following year, I believe, to make those, to make those changes. What we do is, this is a situation which there's a policy that has incorporation by reference, which means that if we create the documents that are necessary, the fact that this policy references them allows us to use those, so.
So, this, this is the new one that came up on the law, under the, with the Governor's passing. So, does this, I'm not saying in this where it says, it just says, "A recruitment plan." I don't see where there's a position or a person attached to doing this, so I guess that's going to be in the plan, that all that would be in the plan.
If I may, Board Member Cummings, it's actually a great question, because one of the questions I had about this in reading it is, the Board will develop, is the Board separately going to develop one, or is the Board using Superintendent and my team as designee? Because we already have procedures underway to address this, so.
So, is there a need to reword that, or does the statute specifically say that the Board will develop?
That's the statutory language. It also says that with a number of policies, saying the Board, the Board will do the following, and the action arm for the Board in those cases is often operations, the Superintendent's, staff, to be able to do that. So, this, we're not required to have much more than what's in this statute, in the statute, saying that we will develop such a plan. The plan does not necessarily need to be posted within the statute itself, I'm sorry, within the policy itself, but we've got to have one, and this, this references one, so that will be needing to be completed. And I, as I said, I've already had staff reach out and indicate that that's being completed now.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions about that, or we can move on to the rest of the 1,000 section? If you all have questions about any of the other 1,000 questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, may I, we just pause for just a moment. For clarification, then, may my, can I, my team proceed with the procedures that we're working on for that? Didn't know if the Board wanted to take any additional direction before we continue to proceed with writing that? Because this could, to me, this could be interpreted as, we are working on the procedures on behalf of the Board, but if the Board so desires to do something, it would be helpful to know that now before we continue with that work. I know they're working really hard on this.
No? Yes, Mr.?
My only ask would be that when it's all said and done, that it be readily available through Human Resources, so that if someone's interested in this option, they can pull it up without having to go to page whatever we're on and-
Right.
-policy number and all of that.
And I believe that as-
Just user-friendly.
And I believe that as adoption, as a plan, it will need to go through rulemaking and development as well, so I'll continue to work with Ms. Morant, to whatever degree I can be of help.
So, Attorney Powers, for clarification on that, your understanding is that once the plan itself is then created, that we also have to approve the recruitment plan, the procedure essentially?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll be seeing that, yes.
Please, and, yes.
Sounds like what I'm hearing, the Superintendent's saying that they don't want us doing double duty.
Right.
Basically, correct?
That's correct. If the Board wants to take a certain direction or a path, I don't want our team to get in the middle of that. You know, I don't want to, I don't want to continue with the work if the Board has certain intentions around this.
I did not. I was just concerned about where we were in the process.
Sure. So, Board, from what I'm understanding from us, I believe, is that, Dr. Gullett, you continue to have your teamwork, and then if we have to then review that plan, and if there are additions, subtractions, whatever we have at that point, then we can certainly have that discussion. But go ahead and create something beautiful, and then we'll take a look at it from there.
Thank you.
Sound good, Board? Okay, perfect. Are there any other questions in the 1,000 section?
I do not.
Okay. Dr. James, do you have anything? Do you guys see anything that stood out glaringly? Okay. I believe we're ready to move on to the 2,000s.
Okay. Moving on to the 2,000s, which is our program policies.
And just looking for the, get to the start of it. Anybody has a PDF page number to get me started in the 2,000? Scrolling. I know, me too. So much of this is statute language.
87.
Thank you. I was on 85. I'm almost there. Perfect. Oh, no, I'm still on that. Sorry. I'm almost there. Okay, did, Board, do you have any questions in the 2,000 section?
I don't.
I had a couple, but they were mainly just, do you have any, Ms. Conrad?
Well, let me find the number. 2215.
Okay.
Program of instruction.
Can you give us a page number at the bottom of the page?
I just have 2.2 on here. Does it say S?
We don't have page numbers.
Yeah, it's not a page number.
If it says SBA?
Yes, it does.
And then right beside that?
096.
Thank you. That's the page number for us.
Okay. I just wondered if there was any clarification. This states that classroom instruction by school personnel or third parties on sexual orientation or gender identity may not occur in kindergarten through grade three, or in other grades in a manner that is not age-appropriate. Do we have more specific guidelines on that, or is it just, like, who makes that decision? Who decides what is appropriate for fifth grade and what's appropriate for eighth grade?
So, I think I can answer that question, but Dr. Gullett, certainly I want to, and even Attorney Powers, and we dealt with this very stringently when the statute went into effect, actually, I think it's 1557. Whenever this was written into law, the law specifically says "age-appropriate," and it is up to the DOE to determine what age-appropriate is, and I don't believe we've received those guidelines yet.
It's very subjective.
It, that was part of the argument on this debate on the, I was there when the House floor debated it and the Senate floor. That was part of the debate that occurred, but this is the way the statute read that was passed into law, and so it is now up to the DOE to determine what is age-appropriate. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That is correct. We have not received any other follow-up and specific information to help us to better understand what that means.
Will Marion County take its own, is it able to take what the DOE sends us, and we can use it to make it appropriate for what we feel best is for our schools and our communities, or is it a specific stringent requirement?
Great question, Board Member Conrad. My recommendation as a Superintendent at this time is to wait for the Department of Education to define it, and we'll follow along with what their guidance is.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, and basically, this, this language here is straight from the statute, so we can't violate it if we're using statutory language in this policy. So, it does leave some, a lot of gray area, Board Member Conrad, and it does actually kind of put our folk in a peculiar situation.
Well, and, and along those lines, this particular section, Section D, classroom instruction by school personnel or third parties on sexual orientation or gender identity may not occur in kindergarten through grade three, that's, that's the law. Or in other grades in a manner that is not age-appropriate. So, it puts the burden on the person, or a group, or a school doing the instruction to ensure that it is age-appropriate. So, the fact that it says that it's, I mean, it's stating it as the negative there, that it's impermissible to do it in a manner that's not age-appropriate. So, if you're going to make an attempt at doing so, you are, the burden is on you to make sure that it is indeed age-appropriate.
Dr. James?
In the case that the Board is presented with a situation where a parent feels that this has been violated, and we have yet to receive guidance from the DOE, is it going to be the Board's decision to determine whether it is age-appropriate or developmentally appropriate in grades four through 12?
I, I would think that that would be something that we would need to forward to DOE and ask for specific clarity on it, Attorney, versus us making that determination, and then we get penalized as a Board that we went beyond the law. That's just my thinking. Attorney Powers?
Yeah, I would concur with that. I mean, the fact is that when, when challenged, ultimately, the DOE has been assigned the role of providing the standards for this. So far, we haven't gotten those. So, when we know more about what the guidelines are for that, in the meantime, the only safe zone is to stay away from the areas which are potentially counterproductive or potentially, you know, violative for us. So, in the interim, the only real thing we can do is to ensure that we are falling well on the side of age-appropriate until DOE further defines it and shows us what our boundaries are.
Chair? Yes, Mr.?
A couple of things that are reassuring to me is what you just said, and the fact that we're still waiting- that we're still waiting on the tap, you know, the technical assistance paper, and this is an area where it can be a little bit frustrating. However, the, the state has spoken, and until they speak further, it, to me, it only makes sense to direct questions to them. In the meantime, we're fortunate that our Psychological Services Department and those are, that are tasked with our social-emotional learning curriculums, those are all in alignment, so we have some protection there. It's going to be the way it is until we hear more, sadly.
And we have had, you know, quite a few discussions about social-emotional learning, but we also have had some surprises come up in that curriculum that we were not aware of. And so my question really was, thinking about that, as something comes up, and a teacher or a grade level is in the middle, you know, comes across this lesson that they may deem inappropriate for that grade level, I just wondered if, if we can take action on that or give direction. But you're saying, no, we would like to wait and hear from DOE. Correct?
Would I, if I may, and certainly, this is only supplemental to what the board may say, but what I would say is that if there's a question, since this is state statute, state funding, a lot of stuff varying on this, if there is a question as to how we are complying, then any number of people from the principal of the school, to the superintendent, to the board, to the board attorney, should, should all be able to exercise some, some quick power to-
Right.
That's good to know.
To, to-
Right.
Make an education-
Yeah, to, to stop that, because we, we don't want to allow things to be going on. Oftentimes, oftentimes, things that inappropriate instruction, or inappropriate behavior, or inappropriate rather from students or anyone else, happens when people aren't watching, or happens when you really didn't think that that was going to be a big deal, because it wasn't to you, and you didn't see the bigger picture. So I think in the, in, in the interim, any modification that needs to be made to our curriculum to make sure that we are staying clearly within what DOE is going to ultimately require for Section D here, I think is a good thing.
Do you have one more question?
Dr. James? Dr. Gullett, has, have we formally removed any pieces of our curriculum, whether it's excerpts, or have any teachers put forth concern regarding items within our curriculum that we've formally decided as a board that are no longer? So Board Member James, we have a, a process in place that the board has adopted, and I, I could get the information for you about what has been removed, if any, but there is a process in place.
And, and, Dr. James, a couple of years ago, we removed some curriculum-
The entire curriculum?
Yeah. That, I can't, was it Stanford Harmony or something?
Yes, Stanford-
We removed it, and the board at that time had the discretion, along with the superintendent, that once we were aware of a situation that it violated, that the superintendent and the board had the authority to go ahead and remove it.
Which is great.
Which I still don't think that we've, I still think we still have that authority as a board, and the superintendent still has the authority.
That's kind of what I was, my original question was kind of leaning towards, is does the board have the authority if we come across things that we feel are teachers bringing to our attention maybe that are inappropriate, that we can make that decision as a board?
I believe that was even a parent that came forward to-
It was, right.
-some curriculum that they were not comfortable with.
Okay. Thank you.
Board, my understanding of this, so just for additional clarity, that certainly if a teacher, even in the midst of teaching something, comes across something that feels questionable, he or she has the ability to pause and not teach whatever they feel is not appropriate, and then take it to the principal, principal takes it to curriculum, and, and we go through the process that way. My hope is that the teacher wouldn't instantaneously bring it straight to the board, but that they would go through their principal and, and talk through, if it's in elementary grades with Ms. Riedel, and, you know, Dr. Livinggood, if it's in the upper grades. But I also want to ensure that teachers understand, at least through the discussion that I have heard, this is specific to instruction. If a conversation occurs with your students, generates, generated conversation with the students in a discussion, and the students are actually driving the conversation, certainly you need to monitor and be careful how that can be construed, but the teacher just has to ensure there isn't instruction occurring. We saw some information, I, I don't remember, was it a Q and A or something, but just at the conference we were recently at about this, I think it was in the legislative session, perhaps, and, and just saying that, that it's, this is all driven about instruction. We can't have curriculum that discusses this, we can't have a teacher in front of students instructing one way or the other on, on these issues. But again, if a conversation occurs in a classroom discussion, while you need to be careful how that conversation continues and almost operate as a moderator, as long as the instructor, the teacher is not instructing in the classroom, that I believe that's what the statute is referencing, that, that there, there have been conversations still occurring in classrooms that are not driven by the instructor. And this is where we're talking in those upper grades, because we definitely know the kindergarten through three, please don't touch this topic at all, but where we're talking in the fourth grade and beyond, where we're saying age-appropriate, again, it's talking strictly about instruction and curriculum for that matter, and just ensuring that the conversation stays as age-appropriate as possible. But just wanting to protect our teachers and understanding that, especially when you're in those upper grades in high school, depending on the class, depending on what they're talking about, that there may be discussions that occur around these topics. We don't have curriculum that says it, we don't have a teacher instructing about them, but-
But, well, Madam Chair, I think what has to be made clear, crystal clear, is that the statute specifically talks about instruction.
Mm-hmm.
Not discussion.
Right.
And that, that, am I saying that right, Superintendent?
Correct.
And that, as a board or district, we're not going to intentionally look for curriculum or, or put the curriculum out there that has that in its instruction, but certain things arise where the, the conversations or the discussions would possibly come up, and I think we have to, I think, even in this, in trying to protect our staff, because I don't want, I don't want to see our staff put in, in peculiar situations, maybe that something has to go through PD on how to navigate the landscape in the classroom and this, this timing, because if not, we're going to have a lot of issues. And then going back to Dr. James' question, if a parent brought something like this forward, what one parent may consider inappropriate, another parent would consider appropriate based on the age, how they deal with their kids, all people deal with their kids differently. So we, we, this is going to be some, there's going to be some real navigating this, this first year with this, and I think we just have to be kind of wise in how we deal with it, how we approach it, but I definitely think there has to be some, some PD on it for our staff.
I think that would be great. And I also want to shout, give a shout-out to our teachers, because I know sometimes they're the first line of defense. Students have good relationship with their teachers, and sometimes these are conversations that do come up in class, and teachers are listening and providing that mental health piece to help them get resources, to help further make decisions on where they stand.
Dr. Gullett? Sorry?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Board Member Conrad, I couldn't agree more, and I've said this to teachers, I've said this to principals at school, we're navigating times that we've never seen before. I know that's very real. This is one, this is one example of many, that we're trying to walk the balance of not getting ahead of the Department of Education to the question earlier, but navigating each piece and trying to handle the best we can with the information that we have. We will be very careful to follow statute, we always will, but we also need to help make sure that our employees are not overburdened with the stress of, of making a mistake or, or not knowing, because that's very real for them, very aware of that, and trying to help them to be prepared, and because we know that they want to do the right thing. And so it's, it's a difficult time for them.
And I do think with Reverend Cummings, talking about having some PD is very important, because in the elementary school level, which is where my, most of my experience is, it was filtering down, this issue was filtering down, and my biggest fear as a teacher is, I wanted to make sure I was saying the right thing, using the correct terminology, which I'm not, I wasn't familiar with, so that I can better assist the student and not do any damage. So I think that will be an important component for us to come up with, some professional development to give teachers guidance on how to handle these situations.
I agree, and once, once the board has approved these changes, then we can, we can set off to do some additional follow-up. Thank you.
Did you have anything to follow up?
Go ahead.
Okay. Anything else on this particular policy? And Attorney Powers, just for an update for us, so the intention is, depending on when we complete this process of review and work session, then it will obviously go on a board agenda thirty days, so we're looking at potentially, depending on how long it, I mean, let's hypothesize that we get through this today, then it would go into, to upcoming board meeting, where we also would have to essentially have a public hearing, I guess, on these.
That's correct.
And so that, potentially, we approve these in January?
That's correct.
Okay. Of course, that all depends on how well this goes today-
And where the meeting dates fall.
Right.
I would say most likely mid to late January-
Right.
-to early February.
Okay. Not trying to rush us today, I'm just trying to help the team know when we might need to, then these are actually approved, and then it's up to the team to have the procedures and, and, because at this point, they're writing things in preparation, knowing that we're going to be approving policy to line up with statute, but we won't actually be there until said date, policy is approved. Okay.
And then we'll be working on the next batch, which will likely be a small handful, very small, compared to this, that'll be coming to the board in the summer.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any other questions? I know I have just a couple, but I want to make sure, my first question is on Policy twenty-two seventy-one, which is page one-twenty-six, and let me get there, and I'll give you the PDF number. And it's a drafting note, and I just want to make sure that we have made the choice and that, there we go. The PDF number is one-thirty-one. So it, it looks as if, it says drafting note, again, this is, do I need to give you the policy number again? This is Policy twenty-two seventy-one, the articulation and access to Florida College System Institutions, and it is page one-thirty-one of our PDF, but at the bottom of the page, it is SBA one-twenty-six. It does say drafting note, select the option if the district operates a career center. I, I think all of those drafting notes will just be taken out whenever, or do we need to take it out now while we're working on it so that it's a clean copy? Because it looks like we've chosen this, that career pathways agreements between career centers in Florida College.
Done.
Okay, perfect. I, I just, and most of mine are those very questions, like the drafting note that I saw still included, and I didn't know, I guess that just automatically, whenever Neola cleans it up, they'll fix it. Okay.
Well, we've, we've, we've eliminated it here too, so they'll have less to fix.
Okay, terrific. Policy, I also had a question on Policy twenty-four thirty, which is page one-forty-seven, but the PDF number is different than that. And it's just a capitalization question. Let me get to the right-
Twenty-four thirty?
Scrolling through this PDF.
SBA one-
SBA one-forty-seven. SBA one-forty-seven. And maybe this is, so District Sponsored Clubs and Activities, Policy twenty-four thirty. Because we had listed by the board in policy, and we had the policy number, policy was capitalized. Are we cap, I'm sorry, this is at the top, second paragraph. My question is, is policy going to be capitalized throughout if we're just talking about policy in general? Or I know it needs to be capitalized if it goes before the policy number.
If it's referring to a particular policy, then it will be capitalized. If it's referring to policies more broadly, then it would be not capitalized.
So it needs to be lowercase in that, since we've taken out the number itself?
In this one, yes.
In this one? Yeah, that one. Do you see it here? Yep, perfect. Like, we've got a mouse-
Right, and it's not necessarily just if it's got a number, if we also refer to the board's sexual harassment policy.
Should be capitalized.
For example, should be capitalized.
Okay.
It's talking about a particular policy.
Okay. But this one is just saying, adopted by the board in policy, and we don't really know what policy.
And that should stay that way, right, small. By this policy down there would be actually capitalized.
Okay. Oh, okay. See, I only caught one of them. Okay. Are there any other questions in the 2,000 section?
Yeah. There you go.
I may not have caught all of these along the way, but-
Okay, I'm sorry, what was the next one?
No, I was just, I, I said I may not have caught all of these along the way. So the understanding, again, when it's a drafting note, and we've chosen, if there is an X there already, then that's actually going to help Neola to clean it up.
Yep, and that's, that's the choice that was made by staff.
Right. So they will be removing those brackets, and, okay, good, then I don't have any more questions in the 2,000 section. I don't know if you all do or not.
I have one.
Okay, Dr. James?
Twenty-four sixty, which is SBA page one-sixty-one, it's the least restrictive environment policy. It's all striked through. Does that mean that we are deleting the policy? There's nothing green within that.
Twenty-four sixty?
Twenty-four sixty.
Point zero one.
And it says deleted this policy.
Twenty-four sixty point zero one.
Everything is gone.
So we're just getting rid of our LRE policy, or?
Deleted this policy.
Yes.
So we will, this board will no longer have a policy regarding LRE?
It's included within other policies now.
Okay. Okay.
And I did have one as well, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's, so we're-
I'm sorry, Reverend Cummings, I couldn't hear you.
Was, was Dr. James done on that?
Yes, I'm done. I just wanted to ensure that we still had some kind of policy regarding LRE.
Sure. So Dr. James, just for clarification, in the policy just preceding that, twenty-four sixty now, does have a subset item E titled least restrictive environment. So you might check that language and see if it says what you believe it should say.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you, it's on the screen as well. What, before we move on from that, because since the recommendation is to strike through and delete the entire policy, let's just ensure that that language is what it should read.
So were those two combined? Did they just move the language from zero, zero-one up to sixty?
I believe so.
That's what it looks like to me.
Well, the language changed to some degree.
Okay.
I just, as I've been throughout the district, I have concerns regarding the way in which we are exercising LRE, and that maybe it's not always appropriate for some of the students who were transitioning into a general education setting, but we're really trying to maximize our LRE. And so I just wanted to ensure that we, the policy was there, so that when we, that discussion comes up, we can reference this.
Section E is a very small section on LRE.
So this would then be almost a legal question, because we know that some of our policies previously may not have aligned with current statute. The one that has been removed, the twenty-four sixty point zero one, did say in Neola, I think it was two thousand thirteen, so is it possible that some of the law has changed in the way it's written? Because two thousand thirteen, I mean, that's a while ago. So I, I don't know that, I'm just thinking out loud on, on how potentially that's now been-
I think it was just edited for clarity.
Adjusted, okay.
Because I don't see any, and, and it was moved away from being a separate policy on its own, back into the policy where it belongs, yes. own, back into the policy where it belongs, E S E. So I'm not seeing anything in the twenty-four sixty that is not also captured in twenty-four sixty point oh-one, and vice versa. It's just, I think it's a little cleaner.
Okay. Board, are we comfortable with moving on from that one?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Okay. Reverend Cummings?
Twenty-four thirty-one point zero three, the concussion head injuries. And I just have a question, I guess this is for the superintendent. So that last sentence, an employee or a volunteer with current collegial pulmonary resuscitation and automated external defibrillator training will be present. Do we provide that for all of our staff?
I asked this question last night of my husband when he was a volunteer coach, and I was, I actually had this conversation just last night. I know that we're providing the training, but Dr. Gullett, if you would like to elaborate.
Yes, thank you for bringing this up, Board Member Cummings. Actually, this just came up recently because we have to develop, we have to make sure they all have the devices and the face-to-face training, and I understand there's been a conversation around some being virtual, so this is something that was already being discussed and under review. Because we've just added, the board just approved a number of new devices, and don't think that we have done extensive training when we've done CPR with AED, like I was trained years ago when I did CPR, I did AED training. So that's something that's still fairly new and underway.
And it speaks to simply an employee, not.
Correct.
And so I know at the high school level, when you have your AODs, all administrators, as well as athletic personnel typically have this training, so when one of us would be present at an athletic event, we then meet this requirement.
So I guess that goes to my question, are, is that a specific part of PD for all AODs? Is that a specific part of in-service training for all coaches or athletic directors? My concern is the making sure that there is someone that has those certifications there.
To my knowledge, what I was told is that somebody is there, but I think we still have a lot of work to do with this. I think more is needed.
And the district provides that training.
And we have to get more training. So meeting, meeting the requirements, yes, but I think it, it could be better. I think there needs, there need to be more people available. If you think about spaces on campuses, right, access, quick access, we have work to do on that.
And I even think, I even think of multiple incidents happening at the same time.
Correct, right.
If there's just one person.
Correct.
And, you know, one person, one device trying to deal with it.
Correct.
My kids just support as the next kid, as a parent.
Yes.
That's what a parent would be saying, why are you doing this one or not? So.
Agreed. You know, we have work, and as I use an example personally, what I'd like to see, what I'd like to get us to is, when I did CPR training, whenever we did CPR training, we had EAED training.
Right.
So you are getting, you're getting more comprehensive training for, for all of the people who are getting trained in both. Yes.
Well, I'm even thinking of the locations of where the AED is, in the building or where you might be. For example, Osceola plays their sports in the gym here. Do they know where the, and maybe it's clearly marked, maybe everybody knows that, but they may be practicing somewhere that they're not having their games, and.
Do they have a travel one?
Right.
Again, why I'm so grateful that the board just approved the additional donation through the hospital district of those AEDs. We need, we need more of those in more places and more people trained.
Right. Thanks for bringing that up, Reverend Cummings. Anything else in the two-thousand section?
Madam Chair, I have a question. Policy twenty-five twenty-one, and it would be, bless you, on the second page in the document, SBA one-sixty-eight, under selection of reviewers, it's just after all the green section. And it says the superintendent or designee, and I know we had extensive conversation on language, I, my recollection is that we use separate superintendent as designee, and we don't say or designee anymore. Is that correct? Okay.
That's correct. That was a decision that, that we as a district made, instead of going with a superintendent or designee, we just superintendent. Correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good catch. I know we had extensive conversation about that, I'm just, I'm going back to it, there was an instance or two where we ensured that we wanted it to be the superintendent, though, as opposed to, and I can't remember the instance, so that was in one of the twelve meetings we had before, but we did have extensive conversation about something we wanted you and you alone, and I don't remember how we separated that from one of these.
Right, and I believe that was the culinary arts program.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Issue. So, yes, I, I think that we've placed here such that everywhere reads superintendent, unless we specifically intend it to be a superintendent's designee.
Okay.
And the superintendent can then designate who they wish, but that makes it so that this isn't giving anyone ambiguous permission, that they have the superintendent's authority to act on her behalf because they're her employee. In fact, it requires a specific designation, and we've worked with the superintendent staff, just as we've worked with the board, on having an individual be designated with a particular type of duty, but then that's spelled out, outlined, signed, so that it's not just done on behalf of the superintendent at all times.
I remember that conversation.
I just, I wanted to bring that back forth because I knew we had extensive conversation about it, but it doesn't hurt to bring it back up for sheer transparency of the process. Okay, is there anything else in the two-thousand section? Okay, hearing none. I'm actually going to do a pause and say, is there any public comment on sections zero-zero-zero-zero, one thousand or two thousand? Seeing none, moving on. We'll go with section three thousand.
Three thousand are the instructional staff sections, and those consist of a bit fewer policies than the remainder. We spent a lot of time working on instructional staff provisions and the initial updates, so, and staff has, again, seen and reviewed these and made the suggested edits that they wish.
Yes, Ms. Cummings?
I just wanted to make one comment. I was proud to see there was discussion frequently, recently, about our substitutes, and we had an eighteen-year-old substitute that wanted to sub, and so I see that that policy is already in the works for changing. It's now eighteen. I just wanted to say thank you. I thought that was a quick turnaround to solve a problem, because we do need substitutes. Thank you.
Well, and that's a perfect example of one that we saw a need for a fix and a relatively quick note, and then if anything, rulemaking and development is not quick. So we were able to do it via resolution until such time as we can place it in with an update for policy.
Yes, thank you. Other questions in the three thousand section?
One zero-one. And I know there was some discussion about the, or we did something recently about background checks, if something happened, the time that they could reapply.
Reverend Cummings, can you pull your microphone just a little closer?
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
The, there was something done recently where we talked about the timeframes, if they had a, if they did a background check, and something came up that they did not disclose, that it would be a shorter timeframe. Superintendent, are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
Yes, I certainly am.
And I'm not seeing.
Is it that section on SBA one-eighty-eight, under the, it's kind of near the end? Current employees will be re-screened, employees within the last screening, is that what you're speaking to?
Well, that's the normal re-screening dates. I think what he might be referring to is the very last paragraph that's in green, and that is if the information received as a result of the criminal history check, records check, indicates that a certificated instructional staff member has been convicted of certain crimes enumerated by law, superintendent must report this information to FDOE per Policy eighty-one forty-one, which is mandatory reporting of misconduct by certification, certificated, certificated employees. There we go, I'll get it out eventually. And that would be one in which if, if something came and was discovered, though I don't know if that's, if that's specifically what you're talking about.
No, this was, this was in relation to if a person applied for a job, they did the background check, something happened thirty years ago, whatever, and they didn't put it on there, they forgot about it, whatever, and they were disqualified from that position, but they could not reapply for a whole year.
Right.
And we changed that recently to, if I'm not mistaken, sixty days, ninety days, or something? Six, was it six months?
Months, I think, was the last change.
I fucking went to ninety.
I have to, I'll have to check with Ms. Morant, that was a discussion that Mr. Carson was having with the team.
Right.
Yes.
And I don't believe that's a policy.
Correct.
Act, I believe that's a procedure.
That procedure, okay.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, I was, I was actually looking for that one, because I know that there were some people.
Right. I, I will provide, I will confirm, we had that discussion, and I will send it to the board.
Thank you.
Where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know as a matter of policy, with all of the new dates coming in, I know we did talk about it extensively before, that there would be someone assigned in human resources to ensure that all of our employees, based on these timeframes, are going, which is going to be a lot of work for somebody, and we understand that, but again, this is new statute that we have to ensure we're in compliance with on the screenings of these employees that haven't been screened, potentially re-screened in some time, so.
One of the things that I would like to see made possible, I don't know if it's policy or not, but there are many individuals who work in the healthcare industry or childcare industry that have Level Two background checks, and because a Level Two background check and a Level One are not under the same branch of the clearinghouse, those individuals then have to go through that secondary step for, to seek employment, even though a Level Two is a more strenuous background check. An individual who's maybe working in elder care, in, in some form of healthcare, and wants to transition into being a paraprofessional with us, would have to go to a Level One background check in addition to the one they already have on file because of the way the clearinghouse works. So that's just something that I would love to see streamlined, if possible, so that we could expedite the hiring process for individuals and alleviate that cost as well, because that, that cost is, is that employee carries, and they've already presumably paid about a hundred dollars for the first one.
So Attorney Powers, that, I guess that comes into question, is the background screening, is it transferable, once you have it from one location to another? So it's not, but that's a clearinghouse issue?
The clearinghouse is simply that anyone who's involved in certain elder care, childcare, healthcare, has to, all of their data is, is put there for anybody that is involved within, as an employer, within one of those agencies to be able to pull from. The idea is that multiple reporting sources can help to capture if there is something, so nothing's overlooked. So that's the purpose of the clearinghouse, and it has, doesn't really have much to do with what, with what Dr. James is, is concerned about, which is a separate issue. So the clearinghouse itself is just a place for us to go and look. As to how do we certify someone, the clearinghouse may catch us, may allow us to catch if there was a, if there was an event we didn't know about, but completing something on the clearinghouse alone wouldn't be sufficient for us to do the same.
Right.
It, it doesn't streamline things for us, really. It just makes it more likely that we're going to locate.
If it's there.
If it's there. And so the, it's perfectly valid concern that, yes, in coming from other, other agencies that perhaps were not just a, you know, another, another school, they might need to complete an entirely new set or round of, of background screens, and that's, that's true.
And I know we did have conversation about that cost then being on the employee, because that is the way it's set up, so that, it is a good point, Dr. James, I don't know that there's a remedy to it, I don't know.
It just seemed to be non-transferable. So if you have a Level Two, it's non-transferable to a Level One, which I don't, I don't know that there's a fix, but.
Well, you would think, like you're saying, I guess, I guess I'm hearing it right, that the non, the Level Two is more exhaustive or stringent, that it should be taken in lieu of a Level One, and I guess that's what I'm hearing.
Yes, and I've seen it, it, it just, it seems to me like if you're, if you can be cleared to work in healthcare or childcare, then if ours is a less stringent, then I don't know why we couldn't, but I, I don't know the procedures for that, so.
I don't think they're, they're, they're not transferable from agency to aid, so if a person.
Well, they are.
Are they transferable?
In my own private business, so for someone already has a Level Two and they're working in healthcare, they don't have to get another Level Two to work in childcare. That Level Two is transferable between Level Two agencies. So someone could be a CNA and decide to work in childcare, and I can pull them up.
So you mean if they're currently working in?
Not even currently, they could have gotten a screening in the last five years, and they will still show up in the clearinghouse for any agency that's trying to pull that Level Two background check. They have to get a re-screen for fifteen dollars, but that's way less of a, of a, but if they have a gap in service, but still their screening is within the five years of its initial, then they are, you know, eligible for that re-screening, and I believe it's fifteen dollars, don't quote me, but, so, for instance, if we have individuals who were previously working in, in healthcare, and it would be a fifteen-dollar re-screen to then get employment within the public school system, opposed to, you know, a hundred dollars, or whatever that cost is, to go get, you know, a Level One. And I don't, again, I don't know them.
Is that, I'll get, you're just like, Ms. Thor, is that something that potentially it is a, a private entity versus working in the public sector? I don't know the answer. We're kind of, we don't really have a solution here, we're just, I'm interested in hearing if we could create one, Ms. Thor, or maybe you have additional information?
Well, in, in this day and age, I would be a lot more comfortable knowing that all of our potential employees went through the Level Two.
I would agree, and I think it would streamline the process, because the cost is the same.
Ms. Thor.
And then in terms of streamlining the process, that would make it a lot less complicated, and much less of a barrier, just thinking out loud, it's Level Two across the board, acknowledging that what's, what's standard and accepted is actually higher in the private sector than in the public sector. So help me understand why we wouldn't do that, and why we wouldn't change our policy to just go with the Level Two. Wouldn't that just solve the problem?
Across the board?
Across the board.
I, I don't know if the, the cost differential.
I would have to defer to someone who knows more about this particular principle than I do. I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. What I can say is that statute requires that we list for, for the purposes of this policy, that we all, that we are doing the clearinghouse screening. As to what our core screening and requirements are, I'd have to look into that or research it, or we'd have to talk to, you know, Ms. Morant or Mr. McFadden in order to find out more.
I just, it, it seems like there's some potential here to reduce complexity and complications and time, length of time, with, with our hiring process, which we all know the situation that we're in with that, and making sure that we have a system in place that creates the most opportunity for the most qualified and people that are well-screened, I'll say.
The cost of a Level Two, I believe, is a little bit more significant than a Level One. I do not know that to be entirely fact. It is an interesting proposition, perhaps, Dr. Gullett, if you want to talk to Ms. Morant and determine if this is a direction that we would like to go, considering we now are going to have new language with dates, we're going to have multiple people needing to be re-screened anyway, do we just take them to Level Two background screens, all of the entire district? That's a question that we need your team to bring us back recommendations on that.
That's it.
Yes. Yes.
Let me ask a question, even with these rescreenings, I know for a new hire, the employee bears the cost of that.
Right.
For the rescreening, does the employee bear the cost of that? Because I don't think that would be, you guys were employed in the district, did you have to pay for the rescreenings?
I only remember paying, it's been a long ago, Reverend Cummings, but mine was just an initial screening.
And that's why I think the statute actually has now changed, because at least my understanding is, we have multiple employees that have been employed for a very long period of time that haven't been rescreened. So I think that's why statute now has changed, so it's possible that you were screened, I'm not going to say how many years ago, but some time ago, and have not been rescreened in recent times, so.
And then the other part of my statement would be, I would be concerned, Dr. James kind of dropped my thinking on this, she said that the level two is good for a certain amount of time, I would be concerned if they were moving from one agency to another agency if there had been a gap, because there's, something could have happened.
Right.
In that gap, that the, the one that they had at their previous employer wouldn't have caught, and the new one would catch.
Sure.
So those, that's a concern.
Right.
And two, two quick items, one is in response to your question, right next to our large yellow cursor there, the cost of the subsequent background screes, screening will be borne by the board, and this was something that we'd talked about once before.
I see it.
But also, everything within this policy, I was just scanning as we're talking, everything that's within this policy is still required statutorily. So, not just the clearinghouse section, but everything else that we, that we do there. So, if we, if we wish to adopt some other means of screening in addition to, or in substitution for what we do, we're going to have to make sure that it's compliant with each of the statutes that are listed here within policy.
Right.
I did want to note too, so as a previous board employee, I had a background screening in 2018, and then as I came to the board, I went and had another background screening done. If, if that had been a level two, it would have only required a rescreen on the part of the board to log in and, and do a fifteen dollar rescreen to ensure that during that gap of service, because I'm still within the five years approaching the end of it from 2018, and so I think that's just one thing to, to bring note to, how it would have been handled if it maybe had looked differently in the clearinghouse is all, so, because then as an employee, we have, I know Reverend Cummings has mentioned many times, our retired teachers coming back into service, we're going to then, if you've just retired in the last year, and now I'm asking you to come back, I'm also going to be asking you to pay for that background screening again, when theoretically you may very well have a, an eligible background screening still there. And that's also been a concern for our substitutes. Yes. You know, ladies and gentlemen that maybe go off to school, but then they're back, and so having to redo that whole process is another added expense, you know, if it's outside of that timeline, and that would allow for them to jump back into the process. Yeah. Since we're so desperate for subs at this time.
Is the rescreening process typically much faster? I would think so, but.
Yes, I mean, I have found personally it to be a quick process unless you're someone who comes from out of state. So if you come from out of state, generally the level two background check, which is what I can speak to, can take quite some time. I know that we can conditionally hire individuals for forty-five days upon that screening coming back, so if an individual came from another state and we hire them, we're able to give them forty-five days where we, where they can be employed and we wait, and that may not be a policy of this board, but rescreens, you know, typically if you're within state, come back in a matter of days, and, and the clearinghouse actually notifies us via email when an individual is, is approaching their five-year mark. So we get an email that says this employee is, you know, within sixty days of their expiration, which it looks to be what this policy is going to require, and that, and that renewal in any, in that period of time, and so that's what I've experienced.
So Dr. Gullett, what I'm hearing again from our discussion here is that we would like additional information on how this can potentially be adapted in procedure that, to talk about cost certainly, because there may be additional costs should we go in this direction, timeline, it may take longer for level two, and that may actually not expedite our process, it may actually elongate the timeframe, so I think we're welcoming additional information on the procedure, specifically in reference to this policy, as we approve it, because we have to approve the policy too before we can really get into it.
Thank you, we'll follow up with you, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, Board, any other questions in the three thousand section? Thank you for bringing that up, Board, good conversation.
So, or, to clarify, with this one, this is one that's going to, there's going to be future discussion regarding procedures to implement, but we're accepting this, this text of statute, right?
At this juncture, I, I believe so, depending on how the procedure comes forth, though, it will be up to us to then say if we want to incorporate some level two language, if in fact that's, once we receive additional information, if we want to include that in policy, or if it just needs to stay in procedures as the team implements.
Okay, so we would continue this for now and then potentially update in the future?
That's how I saw it, Doc, Ms. Thor.
Or, or if it gets that potentially a resolution, if we find that, that there's a great idea here that we can implement and streamline things, and let's do it, and that's resolution.
Right.
Right. Absolutely.
I like it.
Okay. Moving on, do you have, Board, are there additional questions in the three thousand section? This is instructional staff section. Certainly if you have comments on anything. Are we good?
I think so.
Okay. If so, I think we can move on to the four thousand section. Board, we've been going for an hour and fifteen minutes, we want to keep going, we need a break, how are we doing?
Doing okay.
Doing good? Okay.
And you'll notice that the four thousands are, they mirror very closely the same edits that were put on the instructional staff ones, so most of them will be of similar kind.
Right.
Right. So I'm good with the four thousands.
I did have one question.
Sure, go ahead.
Regarding requirements for paraprofessionals, I know that SBA 238 discusses the requirements of highly qualified, and C is passing the state-approved assessments. I do also know, in the community, there are many individuals who would like to be paraprofessionals of the Marion County Public Schools, but struggle to pass that assessment, and what I, I know that we do sometimes a temporary, for instance, the temporary teaching certificate gives people three years to pass assessments to be able to gain their professional teaching certification. So when we're looking at these paraprofessionals, does the Board have leverage to create some kind of interim certification program so that we could potentially hire very knowledgeable and child-loving individuals who maybe are just struggling to pass the reading or math portion of the paraprofessional test? And I know many individuals who've taken and failed, and that doesn't mean that they are not a quality educator, it may just mean that they struggle with test-taking, or something of that nature, and so I just didn't know if this Board had the leverage to create something like that, or if we want to at all.
Sure. That, that's a great question, actually, just for your information, Board, at the Florida School Board Association Legislative and Advocacy Conversation, there are a couple of Board members around the state that are actually kind of championing this behind the scenes, saying, we need to change the general knowledge test, we need to change the requirements, like potentially, you know, we're, they're, they're saying most often for the career technical side, which we do have the ability then to come in and have district, where we give district certifications for the career tech teachers and so forth, but interesting comment there on paraprofessionals. I, I don't know if statutorily we have the ability to do that, but Dr. Gullett, do you have additional information?
Well, I'm, thank you, Chair. Board Member James, I, the ques, is the question, do we, does, does the Board have authority to grant temporary certificates in lieu of what the state is providing? Yeah, so the requirements for the paraprofessional are outlined in this policy, and I guess my question is, as a Board, do we have the, the authority to make exceptions for individuals who don't meet A, B, or C requirement, or give them a time period in which we can hire them and then they have to pass within a certain period, or, I just don't know if we, or if this is the authority, and, and maybe Attorney Powers can speak to that, but.
Which policy are you on right now?
Forty-one twenty.
Forty-one twenty.
Yeah, you're on the correct one.
It's right there, yep, right there where you were.
Because this one.
Yep, A, B, C, right there.
Right, with the general knowledge.
Yeah.
Because legislature has been very, this is new language, that they are ensuring that if a, if a person does not achieve a passing score, that districts are going to ensure that there is assistance for the general knowledge exam, and that we now are required to ensure, we may have been in the past, but now by statute, we are required to ensure that we are helping them achieve a passing score, so rather than eliminating it altogether, there is.
My question is, though, how are we capturing those individuals? So if we have an individual who goes to MTC to take this assessment, and they are not a student of MTC, they're not a, they're not an employee of Marion County Public Schools, they're simply an individual in our community trying to gain these requirements to become a paraprofessional, how are we capturing those individuals to then best support them after they have failed the assessment to become a paraprofessional? Because that's what this is speaking to, is that we have to provide that assistance, right?
Right.
But how are we identifying them if they are not current employees?
We're required to provide that assistance to an employee.
But not an outside.
But not someone outside of the system. But how many, how many individuals do we have seeking paraprofessional certification that are current employees in another capacity? There would, there would probably be very, very few individuals, clerical staff and custodial staff would be probably the only individuals of, within our employment that would not have a superseding requirement.
Dr. Gullett?
So I'm, I'm going to follow, the first question you asked was, and I don't want to step in, in front of Attorney Powers, I believe the first question you asked is, does the Board have the authority to offer certificates? And the answer, as the Superintendent, is no. Attorney Powers can, can add or give his, but, but the state issues certificates, we do not issue certificates, so I think that was your first question. However, I think going into your second question is, the statute has been updated to reflect this, which is what the Chair is sharing. We, we have created, we have enhanced our training for our non-instructional pathways, and we have, we have begun, we already did, to offer training this past year for, for those in those roles we had not prior. So we were ready ahead of this. I think your third question is tracking, and I'd have to get that information to you. So I think you're asking, and your third question is, how many, and I, I don't know off the top of my head, but certainly we can provide that. I think in essence what you're asking, and I think what you're recognizing, is this is a critical need for us, and could not agree more, which is why we are already on the pathway of making sure that we are reaching out and providing much-needed support to our non-instructional staff, especially our paraprofessionals in the roles that they're serving, but also to help them, I've met several, not even paraprofessionals, but other staff members, employees in our district, who want to become teachers. One is in lunchroom, one is a bus driver, and, and trying to help them to tap into the training that we're offering, and so we have to continue to do that, and we are committed to doing that. If you would like specific information as to how many, I'd have to get that for you. Does that address your questions?
Yes, I think, and specifically my how many was addressing the people we're missing and the, the non-employees who we could potentially be assisting in passing the assessment, so I, I can appreciate Attorney Powers' statement that this at the end is addressing how we're supporting our current employees, but I believe there is a, and we could get that number from MTC, would be one place we could go to look for it, but there are individuals seeking a passing score on this assessment to then seek employment within Marion County Public Schools, and we are not providing supports to those individuals because, well, they're not our employee. So that could be an opportunity to offer, you know, free, free evening study sessions and those kinds of things, so that we could potentially support those individuals on their journey to employment with Marion County Public Schools.
Chair? Yes, Ms. Thor.
Yes, and I'm thinking about, in terms of recruiting within the, to the greater community, you know, would, would you like to be a paraprofessional, work directly with children in Marion County Public Schools? Well, here's a pathway for you, you know, maybe through Howard Academy and, or MTC to begin to bring people in. Well, what do I have to be able to do? Well, if you don't have your sixty credit hours, your, your associate's degree or higher, then you need to be able to pass this test, and here's the support that we're providing through the school system to be able to help you do that. I remember when this went down, and it was painful, and you remember this, Elena, we had a couple of fantastic paraprofessionals that were just not able to pass, and they literally had to move into other positions, and they lost that connection with kids, and the kids lost that connection with them. So, anything we can do to prevent that from ever happening again? I love the idea of having a temporary paracertification, just like we do with teachers, it's like we let teachers come in and teach with very little to no experience, but we're not doing the same anymore with paraprofessionals, so I see it's sort of like a matching thing. You know, if we're going to do it for teachers, why wouldn't we do it for pairs? But this would be one way to offset that a little bit. I feel like that's how I've processed this conversation.
I agree.
With that being said, would that temporary certification have to come from the state?
I'm sure, just like the temporary for teachers does.
That's what it is for the teachers, so I would assume.
We don't have it.
And that speaks to what Dr. Gullett said, which is, we don't have the authority to do it.
Don't have that authority as a district.
So, I think if we could do something to meet people in the middle and help assist them in passing those assessments, so that we can fill our classrooms full of qualified individuals.
Well, I, I think, kind of going back to what Vice Chair Thor just said, if, if the district has implemented something where we have every quarter a, some type of training, some type of workshop for parents to, I guess like a study hall or whatever, that can test taking skills or whatever, I think those types of things will help and suffice and meet the requirements for us in this policy.
If I may, Chair, I, I really appreciate the Board discussion on this, because what it speaks to is our recruitment and retention.
Yes.
Right, that we're supporting our employees, and we are, we are seeking those who want to, to be with our children and, and support our children and our students, so it, that's part of thinking outside the box, and, and, and seeking those who want to serve. So, absolutely, we'll take this back to the team and come up with some other ideas, too. Thank you.
Also, while I'm thinking about it, it just hit me, our Superintendent, could that also be something that we utilize when we're doing these parent engagements?
Yes.
Around the county?
Yes.
Because that's, to me, that's always a great place to recruit.
Yes.
Especially parents that are already volunteering, you know, heavily, why not get them in as paraprofessionals, and they can make a little money, and maybe do it as a job share option, maybe.
Great discussion, Board. Anything else in the four thousand section?
And for those keeping track at home, we are almost halfway through.
We are moving along.
I'm on two forty-two out of five ninety-four.
I know. There was a lot of work done leading up to this, but.
Okay, then moving on to the five thousands, if no one has anything.
No.
Five thousands are policies dealing with students, and again, the district did quite a bit, the Board did quite a bit, to adapt and adopt the appropriate policies back in June, July of last year, so these are ones that we found that had needed additional attention and have been, again, reviewed by staff.
I do have, I do have one.
Okay.
Fifty-two hundred attendance.
Can you give us a page number?
Policy number is?
Fifty-two hundred.
Fifty-two hundred?
What is it?
That is attendance.
SBA 288.
And, and there's nothing highlighted on this, I'm, I'm just asking this. And, and there's nothing highlighted on this, but I'm, I'm just asking this question. Where it says habitual truancy at the bottom, and I know that is all basically falls under statute, superintendent's authorized to file, you know, all these things within fifteen days. My question, I guess, would be to the attorney, I know that we have to be within state statute. Can we, can our policy be more restrictive than state statute?
Uh, not to the degree.
That's restrictive or more restrictive?
To the degree that we wish to make it our policy within the district, fine. But as to account, as, as to how it accounts to, or how it accrues to the court system enforcing it, statute is the only way to get there. So, for example, if we were to say, well, absences are not even a, I'm sorry, attend, attendance tardies, for example, are not included within, within, within our truancy policies. So, and therefore, no matter how many times a student has a, you know, has a late, it's not going to be the, the fatal error there. It's going to be the ones that are, that are.
Right, and, and the reason I ask that is because when I look at the, that last paragraph down there where it says fifteen unexcused absences.
Right.
School within ninety days, I'm thinking that's too many. I'm thinking that number needs to be much lower, and it's for the district, then we need, we need to have a lower number of triggering us. Fifteen is, when you miss fifteen days in a semester, or, or nine weeks.
Right.
We, we've missed the boat there, and that's where I'm, I'm going.
You're, you're, you're correct.
More restrictive than less of this.
And I would just say that as to the truancy issue, I would want this, I would want our policy to match as closely to the statute as possible. But as to how it is with the actual kids in schools, and in that case, the superintendent's procedures can be adopted and more restrictive by, by, by the far side.
Is our procedure more restrictive or just in line with, and, and I'm not, not to put you on the spot on that, but I'm thinking that we need, our procedure needs to be a little bit more restrictive.
Board Member Cummings, I don't, I don't disagree. I mean, I think if, when you, when you miss that number of days, usually, we usually talk about ten being a point, a lever, which with you say, that's excessive. I mean, and there are certainly, so anybody watching, and there are certainly very good reasons why that may occur, very valid reasons, but you miss instruction. And so as, as again, the, the board updates these policies, we are going through, and this is one of those on our list to update procedures, but I, but I, I stand committed to, we need students in school to teach them, and we, we have to stay ahead of this and not be reactive to attendance.
So Madam Chair, and Superintendent, can we notate that we will look at the number here, not for the policy, but for the procedure? If we're going to turn things around as a district, I, I concur with the superintendent that we need these kids in front of us.
Yeah, that's great, if I may, Madam Chair. Board Member Cummings, we'll also include that, because I know the topic was moved from the work session. When we do attendance, we'll cover that as well, so we can have conversation then, if that would work.
Sorry, I just turned this way, both of you have your finger up. I'll start with Ms. Conrad.
Okay, I just, I want to acknowledge that I know the board's been working on this topic regularly, and I do think it's so important. But I just want to give a shout out, as I visit schools, particularly elementary schools, they are busting their tails to provide positive reinforcement for students getting to school. And I just want to say publicly, thank you for the work that you're doing every day to encourage your students to get to school. I also have one concern about attendance. If we have, we get attendance records each day, there is one school that is at the fifty percent rate. Is that something that, Dr. Gullett, you address? Or is that like the concern there, because the percentage is so low? It's drastically below all of the other percentages for our schools. How is that addressed, or do we have policy for correcting that?
Dr. Gullett, I believe that the school and potentially, or schools in question, are, are not necessarily public schools as day-to-day operating schools. They are some of our.
Alternative.
Alternative placement locations. Do you have additional comment on how we might be able to address that?
I, I can answer, thank you, Madam Chair. Board Member Conrad, actually, I just had a conversation with Secretary Hall about that last week, when we were in Tampa, about, I think that what you're referencing is some of the attendance issues there, and what we can do to try to, to address it. So we are, we are working on that, I know the team is working on that. It is an issue, and I think it's a broader issue, but it's important that we get some support in doing that.
Right, because my concern is, if they're alternatively placed, and we want them to enter back into their school, not behind any further than when they left, we want to boost them, getting them back into their regular curriculum. So we want them to be aligned with the standards they're already supposed to have covered and be ready to jump in, so they're not, they haven't lost any time.
Indeed, absolutely.
So when the, the team does present to us on attendance, I know that is upcoming, perhaps we also can discuss supports that we are currently offering and how we might be able to, for charter schools, alternative placement, I mean, we get, they're a part of the district, all of their scores count towards us, too. And so attendance, while we're stressing it for the traditional public schools, all of those schools matter. And, and so we need to ensure that we're, those students are in seats as well.
And, and one of the requests I had, that I made when I came to Marion County with regard to the alternative assignments, was to ask them to put in transition coaches, because I think those are also key staff members that are helping to ensure that transition you've just described is in place for the student. The coming and the going back is, is essential to make sure that time for instruction is not lost and momentum is not lost.
Dr. James.
I just wanted to speak to, I think our schools, depending on the school chooses an individual within the administration to be an attendance officer. So whether that's a guidance counselor or an assistant principal, and so each attendance officer kind of creates their own policy in the maybe absence of one, or procedure, rather, for sending out attendance letters. So to Reverend Cummings' point, when I was the attendance officer at the high school level, at the ten-day mark, I ran a report every Tuesday, and every Tuesday, anyone who was new that had reached their ten days in the ninety-day period got a, a mail-merge letter that was sent out. And it's one of those things that if you stay on top of it, it can be a pretty easy task to handle, but if left to grow, it can seem very insurmountable. And so those attendance letters are for, or were for, excused and unexcused. But what I found often was, when we sent those home, there were some parents, specifically at the high school level, who were unaware of absences. And so oftentimes, those letters are a great first step, maybe if the automatic phone calls and text messages and other, in Skyward app are not working, those letters can sometimes be a, a eye-opener for parents who may have not realized their child had missed ten days, excused or unexcused.
Madam Chair, thank you, Dr. James. Triggered something again. The other part was, of what you just said, was that when you were doing it, this is what triggered you. There has to be some consistency.
Agreed.
Across the entire district. It shouldn't be one school doing it one way and another school doing it. Every, every school, if, if we're going to make a, a real impact on attendance, we have to have a consistent procedure policy, whatever it is, that's going to keep these, have butts in the seats. And, and parents knowing that when butts aren't in the seats.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm, I'm going back to that consistency part. We have to make sure that it's standard across the entire district.
And I think specifically even, I think a procedure across the district would be great, and then within feeding patterns, because, you know, I would have parents who would come to me and say, I've never received one of these before, but they had been in the feeder pattern their entire educational career. And if I look back historically at their absences, they've been a child who has been absent consistently, school year after school year. And so that parent should not be having a first-time conversation in ninth grade when presumably that child has had the same historical absence rate year after year.
Very good point. And, and I know, we also had some conversation, I believe this is, we landed in putting it in procedure, because I don't see it in this policy, specifically attendance policy for those who participate in extracurricular activities. I think we put that into procedure as opposed to policy. We did have quite a bit of conversation about that early on, speaking specifically to the athletes. It is not F H S A A requirement to have attendance as a part, they have a GPA requirement, but they do not have an attendance requirement. So it is up to individual districts to put those kinds of requirements on those students participating in extracurricular. And I do believe we put that over into procedures, Dr. Gullett, if I'm not mistaken on that.
That's correct.
Also within the code of student conduct, which means.
Thank you, code of student conduct, yes.
In that effect, right?
Yes. Perfect, okay.
And again, that's where that consistency is going to make a difference.
Absolutely. Vice Chair Thor.
Thank you, and, and I know we're making this very clear as a board, how committed we are to having kids in school and in school regularly and participating and, and getting what they're supposed to be here for. And my hat goes off to Attorney Powers and April Adams, our truancy officer, because when, when COVID hit, things essentially stopped at the judicial level. And then our attendance judge retired, and so we've just been picking up those pieces and getting the ball rolling again. And so I would like to commend the, the hard work of, of you all. And that's the thing, like you were saying, Board Member Cummings, it's, it's getting everybody on the same track, moving in the same direction, and letting technology do some good work for us. There has to be a way, an automated phone call that, that goes directly to the parent or a text. You know, your child did not show up in first period today. There, there has to be a way to, to automate that, and I know that's procedural and operational. But when it becomes our policy and our commitment, then it's those, those details that need to all be in place to, to actually execute and, and make this happen. So I'm always glad to have an attendance conversation.
Absolutely, Chair.
I just want to add that I know, I know sometimes the public doesn't understand that we really are recovering from COVID and the effects that code of COVID had on our school system. And so along with consistency is our students and our parents understanding the accountability piece, that this, this is our expectation, and we expect you to be at school every day. And so just pushing that out back into the community as we recover from COVID, as even last year, we had so many kids that were still absent and not really, their absences weren't really accounted for. So that's just a new mindset, or regrouping that mindset, that you have to be accountable.
And Madam Chair, and I, just a lot of questions keep popping up as we're having these discussions. When kids, I know they, they do the, my question, how often do we update the SkyAlerts, the, the phone numbers in SkyAlert and all those things? And the reason I ask that is because people change phones numbers often now. And I'm thinking that, you know, if you have a kid, you know, their, their number has been put in the system, they go play a new sport or whatever, so that number between them changing sports, the number's changed, they have to fill out some paperwork or something for them to participate in the next sport, correct? So are, do we cross-reference those numbers when they go from sport to sport? Do we update the system? Do we do any updating of the system? Do we put all that on the parent doing it? Because I'm thinking, as Dr. James was talking, you know, and, and Vice Chair Thor, about this, the, the phone call going out, the phone going, call going out was going out to a number that's no longer their, their number. I have a, I have a phone system at my church that I send out to people, and periodically I have to go through it and delete names, and phone numbers have changed, and we're just in that type of age now, where people change phones like they change their coats. So I had another piece of clothing, but I don't say it.
Not people, not me.
So, but they change it. So we have to, how do we stay update, up to date with that?
Yeah, if I may, Madam Chair, great point. Board Member Cummings, it's a constant challenge, and I can tell you, Mr. Christian, who was here with us this morning, consistently sends messages out to schools and says, these are the numbers that came back as incorrect or bad numbers, because they were not effective and they didn't get through. So it's another mechanism to, to let the, let the schools know, these are numbers that need to be corrected to follow up for, and really helpful in doing that.
So he gets a report?
And sends it and communicates with the schools.
Okay, okay.
So that they know, you know, there may be ten numbers on this list that didn't work, let's, let's get those updated numbers.
I was unaware of that, so that's a great resource. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Vice Chair Thor.
Thank you. And yes, and with these hard-to-find students, we did approve the Nexus Lexus program that is used by the tax collector, and the tax man can find you. And so it's a pretty strong, powerful program, and I would encourage schools, you know, we have a vast network of support staff, and, and schools have a lot on their plates, and there's a lot of folks that stand ready and willing to help at the district level. So utilize them early, you know? It's not a failing on the school's part, because you, a parent has learned how to play the system, you know? Let's hit the ball together and, and just find the kid and, and get him in school. So I, I think that's an important statement to make, as we continue to blur the lines between, you know, the school and downtown, or the county office, or the school board, or whatever these terms have been given through the years, that really have hindered and impeded, from my observation, student success, because there's been this hesitation to reach out from the schools to a higher level. And I don't mean directly to the school board, I mean exactly what I just said. You know, we have social work assistants, we have homeschool liaisons, we, you know, we have these layers of folks that have expertise, and really being able to take a few things off the school's plate, facilitate, get results, and keep the flow going, which means keeping our kids in school.
And, and, and thank you. Another part, when we have these, when I was a case manager, whenever I had a contact with a family, I automatically went to that screen and updated information, just as a point of reference for me, because I would always get people saying, that's not my phone number, and you guys didn't call me. So I'm thinking that we have to, and, and we, we do a lot, our staff do a lot, but I think some simple little things like that can help us. I, I'm really concerned about, I, I keep looking at these attendance reports, and I'm just saying that something has to change.
Agreed.
Chair Campbell.
Yes.
I wanted to say, to your point, though, Reverend Cummings, when I was an administrator, the only person on my campus who could update Skyward information from the school's end was the IPC. And so as I sat live in meetings and received, I would say, oh, well, please share with me your updated phone number. I would shoot, I'd have to shoot off emails to my IPC, who may already be drowning in and of herself with all of her own responsibilities to then update. So looking at people's access to be able to update that information and, and freeing up maybe one or two more individuals on a school site, especially some of our schools that are larger, like Westport, that's a significant load for one individual to have to update. But we are able to collect that, that information, it's about making sure then it gets put into Skyward correctly.
Yep, flow.
Are there any other questions specific to this policy? Because Ms. Conrad brought up something that reminded me, I wanted to check on another policy here in the five thousand sections. Do you guys have any additional questions? You mentioned COVID, that we're recovering from COVID, and I remembered it was in the policy, and I wanted to cross-reference how this specific section is referenced in two different policies. I like the way it's written in the policy we've already looked through, which would have been policy twenty-four-ten in School Health Services, but the way policy, I'm going to policy number fifty-seven-eighty, which is SBA three-seventy-three. And if you're scrolling through the PDF, it's PDF page number three-seventy-eight. SBA 373. And if you're scrolling through the PDF, it's PDF page number 378.
It's to the parents' rights.
Yes. And this is specifically referencing the face covering and quarantine mandates in response to COVID-19. And once you all get there, I'll, wherever this, yes, it's the green part right there about the face covering section on the screen. Once you all are there, I can ask my question.
What page of the PDF is that?
The PDF page is 370, the PDF is 378, SBA 373 at the bottom.
This is what's highlighted in green here.
It is, yes, that very section.
And that was placed there specifically by the legislature. And so it is part of Florida statute, right?
Absolutely. My question is how it is placed here. So the way it reads, or I believe the way it would read better, is if we moved the paragraph starting with the word prohibit and reversed it with the paragraph that begins with this prohibition. And here's my justification. The statement reads, neither the board nor any agent or employee of the board may, colon, require a student, et cetera. And then I believe it should say prohibit a student, et cetera. And then following those two statements, then have the sentence that reads, this prohibition does not apply. Because it feels like if we had bullets in there, like the bulleted or bracket, or you know, something like that, if we were using a bulleted numeration way, you would have those two statements that begin with lowercase letters preceding the section that says this prohibition. And it is correct that way in the Policy 2410. But I, thank you for bringing up COVID, because I just did a real quick search. I'm like, I remember seeing that and I didn't actually jot that down. That it didn't feel like it flowed correctly. Are you all in agreement with that thought process?
It would read fine to me that way. That would...
Okay. Terry, did that, I didn't, did it work okay?
Yeah.
We're pulling statute first.
Okay, that we have to include that. Okay, that's fine.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, if the statute has it in that order, geez, of course.
I would ask, does our student code of conduct, I haven't looked, reflect this, pre-COVID, you could not wear things on your face within our student code of conduct because it was presumed you were making a poor choice. And so I was a part of an alt placement for a student who put a scarf over his face. So post-COVID, we changed our expectations and therefore meant it required face coverings. So does our student code of conduct reflect this same language regarding face coverings and that a face mask is different than a scarf?
Allevi mask.
Or, do you know what I mean? And I don't know that to be, I'm unsure of whether our code of conduct reflects the same language.
Great. Thank you. Great point. Board Member James, I defer to Attorney Powers, who guides the Code of Student Conduct, reviews and language as to whether he thinks that should be included if it's in policy. Because I know he provides guidance to the committee.
And I know...
Because I do agree, it has changed quite a bit in terms of what's been allowable. And certainly this is statute, so we will abide by it.
Just the definition of a mask, you know?
Right, true.
Spiderman.
And wear it appropriately. And then there are campuses that, there are campuses that made independent decisions to ban masks which related to, specifically in 2020, political content, whether that's BLM or any other acronym. And so I know that those were more procedural, but they may or may not have been subsequently listed in our code of conduct.
And again, I don't want to step in front of Attorney Powers, but at least I would think that it's a great point, that at least it would be referenced in the code to refer to the policy. So that's clear that that's...
5780, Terry, there you go. Sorry, I know they're looking at statute on the previous question. He may not be following the...
I'm following both.
Okay, good. You're so talented.
Sometimes I can only follow one, but...
Two statute conversations going on simultaneously, so.
Yeah, we've got, I'm looking at Code of Student Conduct. I wasn't aware that we've got any area where that's a clash. So I'm looking up anything that would, that would tell me otherwise. Regardless, if it's something we'd have to, if it did, we would have to modify the Code of Student Conduct if we chose to do that. So...
Well, then this is new language that we will be approving in policy based on, I think this was 2022 legislation, I believe, all this face covering. Is it 2022? Well, I don't know that. You guys have been looking up that. So we would still be on the right cycle to get it updated in the upcoming Code of Student Conduct if that is the case. Very good point, Dr. James.
I think the consistency of that message is very important, especially as our administrators and deans are trying to make decisions, you know, in dealing with students on a daily basis.
If I could, to that, Chair, I agree. I think that it helps, we don't want to step into site-based authority and autonomy, but providing some consistency in messaging, I think, helps them with that regard and provides them with support they need.
I don't see anything within our Code of Student Conduct. I'm looking up the terms face, facial, mask, covering, undercovering, comes up with head coverings.
Yes.
Other facial coverings that fit.
But I don't see anything that indicates...
I saw that as well. And I actually, now that I'm thinking about it, I think that when COVID began, we removed it from the code of conduct because it was conflicting. But I do believe, because we mandated masks as a district, we removed it from the code of conduct because it was conflicting. I would offer that maybe when we revisit the code of conduct, we should bring back, for a matter of school safety, we had that face covering requirement as part of the code of conduct. So I would offer that maybe we should have that conversation again regarding the code of conduct and face coverings and bringing that back potentially when we revisit it.
Duly noted. Dr. Gullett, I'm sure you're, I see you making notes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I have it.
So Terry, have we discovered how statute reads on this and if we're able to flip those two statements?
Okay.
I think it should stay the same way.
It should stay the same way it is, but the way that it's paragraph formatted here makes it look odd.
Okay.
So we are going to, we're requesting Neola to update the formatting, but that formatting is directly from statute. I mean, that, sorry, that language is directly from statute, but the way that they've broken it down
Okay.
makes it appear different.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you for working through that. Board, are there any other questions about this 5,000 section? And once we have concluded if there are any questions or no more questions in the 5,000 section, then I would like for us to take a quick break. We have been going at this for two hours. Did you have more?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
So are we in that same policy, that same one that's talking about the face covering and stuff?
Yes, sir.
I guess maybe I just saw it. The naloxone?
Naloxone, yeah.
Yes, naloxone.
Is that at every school?
This just, is this a permission to be able to purchase a supply of that naloxone?
Right.
And it's, statute has given us the ability to do so if we choose. And we may either on a, this doesn't require that the district do it. It requires that, it shows that we have the capability of doing so if we choose to at any point in the future. Or in specific scenarios, circumstances, locations, we may do this as well.
Do we have to have it there in policy at all? I mean, I know it's...
It's statute.
It's statute, but do we have to have it?
No, it would not have to be in policy. It is an option
Right.
that we can exercise. But the fact that it's in here, if it's left in here, then at some point in the future, that would be informative to someone who is asking, could we, could we do this? We have a, you know, particular events or particular locations that we believe it's all the more important to have these. Should we? Can we? And that would answer the question. But it doesn't have to be in here because this is something that just allows us to...
Right. And the reason I ask that, I see, you know, as I was just reading that one, and I get the language where it says "may." But when you have people that are not reading it from that standpoint, they're going to assume that we're supposed to have it at every school, every function, whatever. And with the fentanyl crisis that we're dealing with right now, the opioid crisis that we're dealing with, there could be an expectation that the district has it on hand when we may not have it on hand. I see the language says "may," "may purchase." But maybe I'm just reading too much into it, but it looks like there's...
Right. And I think you're correct in pointing out that if someone took it that way, that would be an incorrect reading by any measure of what is said here. But that being said, that last paragraph that's in green there, just actually the last two paragraphs because it's also naloxone use and supply, those give us the option to be able to do so. But we retain that option whether or not it's in policy. So we could delete those last two if we chose to. We could leave them if you choose to. But it is something that most likely either one of you or myself will be asked in the future, hey,
Right.
can we do this? In which case, yeah, we'll dig around and find it and say, oh, yes, we can.
Because with that, with that statement that we may have it, and I'm fine with it being there, it leads me to the next. Do we do training on it? Same thing with the AIDs. Have we provided staff with training on how to dispense this? You know, a lot more goes with this, Superintendent. I'm not trying to be troublesome, but I'm...
So if, honestly, Reverend, before you speak, Dr. Gullett, Reverend Cummings, you make a very good point, because I did while I'm in the whole PDF, I did a quick search. This is the only section in all of these policies. It's only in the students' section. And I'm honestly thinking, if we include it, thank you for asking the question, because if we include the language, why wouldn't it be in the Policy 2410 School Health Services? Because frankly, while this does reference students having an opioid overdose, we may have a parent or a staff member or someone else who does, why wouldn't that section itself be moved to more of a general overview section over School Health Services as opposed to just the students' section? Perhaps it has to do with how statute is written, but thank you for bringing that up, Dr. Gullett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board Member Cummings, I am actually glad you brought that up. I'm, I have a lot of concerns. And I think that's where you're going with what expectation there might be of the district. And I'm thinking about our staff members and not only training, but burden. And I would have to have a lot of time with Attorney Powers and others before I'm really comfortable with this, because I just do not want to put our staff in a situation that puts them at risk or makes them very uncomfortable for our core duties. I'm going to go back to our core duties and responsibility is student learning and safety. So, and I do understand this is in the students' section, but I'm also, as you recall from throughout the pandemic, very careful about us staying in our lane and our duty and responsibility as an educational environment. So, and then I think that's what you gathered from the look on my face. I have a lot of questions and a lot of concerns about this, too. Thank you for bringing it up, Board Member Cummings.
So Board, would we be in consensus to remove this from policy altogether or to move it? I'm open to dialogue on if you, how you all feel about, again, thank you, Reverend Cummings, for bringing it up.
I think, I think the attorney needs to do a little bit more exploratory.
No, I mean, I think, I'm happy to do that if the board wants me to. But I will tell you that I believe that this, these two paragraphs actually that are currently highlighted in blue, naloxone use and supply all the way through the last paragraph in English schools' premises, those can be disposed of within this policy. They're not required to be in the policy. It's an option for us. And our option doesn't go away simply because we choose not to list it within policy. It's still a statutory option. We can still avail ourselves of it and exercise it at any time. The only question would be that if we chose to do that, then somebody might not, might not know under what authority it is, and then they'd have to sort of go back and, you know, research can we and how? In which case, we locate this and point this out to them.
In which case, they call you and you give them the, we already, we've had...
Job security for me.
Reference work session, December 5th, at approximately 2 hours, 5 minutes.
Right. So we can, we can leave it out of this. I would, I'd be reluctant to add it into another area of policy because then that may also conflict with some of the core, the single subject core of that policy. So...
Can we just remove it?
If we have consensus, does the board feel comfortable with us taking the highlighted section there in blue out of this policy? Yes, Mr. Thor?
Attorney Powers, what do you feel is the best?
Since we, since I believe that it would require a future discussion as to how and when this product would be used on our campuses and whose responsibilities would be impacted, it makes no sense for us to be attempting to engage in purchases of the supply right now. And that can be something that via a superintendent's procedure, we can certainly still avail ourselves of this option that's required under 499.003. So, sure, long story short, we can get rid of this here and it has no legal effect, doesn't harm us in any way. We can remove it here and still be able to purchase naloxone supply if needed at 499, I'm sorry, pursue it to 499.003.
That's, well, that's what I needed to hear. And then my, along with that, do our SROs carry naloxone?
I think they, I think OPD officers...
I think OPD, I'm not sure if sheriff's office do.
I can't answer that. I don't know. I would have to find out. It's a great question.
Okay, I'd like to know.
Okay.
Yes.
We could find out.
Absolutely. And that's exactly the direction I was going, safe schools, the SROs.
I'm almost sure that every OPD officer and under Chief Graham, when he was...
Yes.
authorized that they had to carry it.
Mm-hmm.
The NarCam.
Right.
Which is the Narcs.
Yes.
Right. I'm not certain if sheriff's office...
There's naloxone available on every campus via our SRO at this time. That's what I would like to know.
Right. Very good question. Okay, I believe I heard consensus that we want to remove those sections, Terry. Thank you. Thanks again for that discussion, Board. I think that certainly helps us
Thank you, guys.
get to where we need to be. Are there any other questions in Section 5,000? Because if not, I would like for us to take about a 10-minute break, if that would be okay, since we've been going for two hours.
Yeah, y'all doing good.
So we're going to 6,000?
We'll be going into the 6,000s. We will be in a brief recess from, starting at 11:06, and we'll come back at 11:16. Thank you. We'll, we'll be going into the 6000s. Um, we will be in a brief recess from, uh, starting at 11:06 and we'll come back at 11:16. Thank you. We are coming back out of recess at 11:16 a.m. Back on our school board work session for December 5th, where we've been discussing school board policies as recommended for updates to the majority of our poli, well, a significant number of our policies, I should say. I should say, we have left off beginning in the 6000 section, which the 6000s reference finances. Um, and Board, I am open for any comments or recommendations that you have. In our PDF document, the 6000s begin on page 388 or SBA 384. I believe that's where they start. Or do you have any comments about the 6000 section of the policies?
And I have a recommendation on one as to policy 6320.
Can you give us a page number, please?
421.
Thank you.
I've highlighted a section here, D, that I believe warrants some consideration. And I wanted to bring it to the Board's attention so the Board could make the edit in full transparency instead of me making the edit and trying to, you know, show the Board that already. Unless otherwise exempted through established procedures, if a vendor does not enter a district template agreement, they must have a current vendor application on file for purchases greater than $2,500. All vendor applications must be approved by the school board legal department. Um, specifically, we altered this recently to, to increase the amount to the 2,500. And that was as per a recommendation of Neola. However, um, what we've encountered is that this is problematic for two reasons. Number one, Florida statute 112 establishes a threshold amount that is at $2,500. Um, I'm sorry, $500. And otherwise, anything over 500 may need to be reported, okay? Secondly, uh, this is ambiguous as to $2,500 when? $2,500 per purchase, per calendar year, per fiscal year, or forever with that vendor? So the way that this policy could be read as stated would allow someone to make a purchase from someone who is not a current vendor with our, with our, uh, uh, district of $2,500 per day. I mean, and literally they could change it
Right.
and, and, and keep paying
Sure.
uh, an amount that would get really out of hand quickly. Now, not that that's happened or is likely to happen, but it creates a possibility that we could have a lot of people not knowing that they've hit a reporting threshold, number one. And number two, completely undermining the idea that there was a $2,500 limit for purchase because of the fact that it would be limited then to below a threshold amount. My suggestion here would be to change that back to $500 as it was before. And we indicate that, um, to be per calendar year. That way, everyone else, that's, that, that encompasses those things where we might be, we don't have a vendor, uh, application on file for a particular, I don't know, a, a a trophy store or something where we're buying something small and de minimis. Um, but, and it's going to be $500 or less. But we don't want to necessarily do that 10, 15, 20 times in a row over the course of a year. So, making it $500 per calendar year will make sure that we don't have any reporting requirement issues with Florida statute 112. Um, and also that keeps it as it was intended to be for, uh, minor purchases. Anything that is more than $500 per calendar year, then that's something that would be, uh, that would trigger our, our need to find a vendor who does that or to make them a vendor, which requires that they provide us with their information and sign our terms and conditions.
So just to get us all on the same page, making, because I saw some flipping, we're, we're in policy 6320, SBA 427 at the bottom of the page there, item D in question. And so Attorney Powers is asking to add in, um, the greater than 2,500 per calendar year as opposed to just leaving that vague.
And to reduce it from 2,500 to the way that the Board had it in prior policy, which was $500.
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So Attorney Pow, why did we change it to 2,500?
Staff had, had written an update that was
Because, because what I remember is.
A long time ago. Well, that, that was, I think what you're thinking of the restrictive portion was based on the, because this is going to be for minor purchases anyway. You're going to want to buy, you know, you're, you're, you're buying P-card sort of items or, or small, small purchases. Um, I think you may be referring to, we increased the, uh, reporting amount from 35,000 to 50,000. And that was true and we kept that. But in this case, um, I believe this was a, an old staff edit that was placed in there, but I think it's had the unintended consequence of making it so that, I'll just give you an example. If we had, uh, a, a person, a service, or a product which we were spending, uh, less than $500 for, we can certainly do that under this policy. However, if we duplicate that purchase, or if another department duplicates that purchase, or if 10 departments duplicate that purchase and everybody's now spending, you know, $500 a pop on that over multiple times, over a long period of time. And we do track in Skyward how, um, in Skyward, how much is spent with each of these vendors. Then the last person in line, even though everyone else has done it, may find themselves now in the unfortunate predicament of having to report because they made a purchase which is over the threshold amount in total. So, no one else had to, but they were the unlucky person who managed to be person number 10 in the chain of $500 purchases.
And the reason I ask that, I, I remember something about us changing this number since I've been on the board.
We, we definitely have, and I, I didn't mean to cut you off there, Reverend Cummings, but we definitely changed it. But I want to ensure that it doesn't impact this. I think we've changed it in multiple locations. So I know that one of the things that we changed was to ensure that we raised the limit on what the Board was approving from a standpoint of donations that we received, because it used to, we have to approve every $500 donation. So we definitely changed that number. Um, and I, I feel like it also had something to do with us changing how much we had to approve from a purchase standpoint. But I don't know that it is also required here in actually just becoming a vendor. Because this is a part of that vendor approval process. Um, what we certainly don't want to do is hold up any processes that have worked well this past year while this has potentially been in place. But if yours, I mean, these would be coming through your department anyway, Attorney Powers. I just, I, I remember we changed it, I do, and there was a reason for it, and it certainly has worked cleanly on a couple of issues. But if this is one, I, I completely agree with the per calendar year. I, I just want to ensure that that $500 is not going to change something that has been working cleanly um, this year, that unless there's legal reason that we need to, to get it off of that 2,500. Dr. Gullett, do you have thoughts on that?
Um, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would like to check with the team. I just know that contracts are still a very arduous process. And I know that Attorney Powers works really hard on those, but we have so many. And there's still a lot of concern that, that we move very slowly and we've lost some um, partnerships because of the, the timeframe. And so I don't know that this is a factor in that or would be, but I would certainly appreciate the opportunity to, to check with those who deal with us every day. Um, namely Ms. Boston Ellis and, and Rick Collins. Um, that, that would just, and I, again, I don't know that it would, but I, I just know that we still have a lot of challenges and with contracts.
Certainly. And, um, I will state this, this is not one that would have to do with whether or not something required a contract. This would, this would be for purchases under $500. Um, everyone that the, the Board does business with, or the, the school does business with, um, is required to be, um, someone who has, is filed with SUN Biz, Department of State. There are certain requirements. Um, these would be the ones where someone wants to go by, I think actually, bad example, because I think Staples is a vendor that we use. But if Staples were not a vendor we use because we mainly use Office Depot or we order our things online, but someone needed, you know, a, a specific type of stapler or paper cutter or something else like that, they could purchase it because it's under $500 and become, and get reimbursed for that purchase. The difference here would be if those were purchases that were over $500 per calendar year, because we're going back to, find ourselves going back to Staples over and over for purchases, then Staples needs to be logged into our system as a vendor, which is relatively straightforward. So, um, yes, it's something we can certainly revisit, but something that I would like to, uh, include within this path of updates. So I'll work with the superintendent on that.
Thank you. I, I could, I'll give a different example and just see if I'm going in that direction. Say, um, some school starts buying T-shirts. direction. Say, some school starts buying T-shirts from a new local business, and they're paying $750 for them, but then another school catches wind, oh, you got a great deal, let's do that. At some point, you're saying at the $500 level, they would need to be registered as a vendor, whereas if they do it right now, the way it's written, they could do it up to $2,500 essentially, and it would take two or three schools at 750, no, three, four schools at $750 a pop, then to get to this threshold where they actually would have to register as a vendor. Is that a better illustration, or?
Probably. And I will...
Sorry.
Well, there's another factor in here, too, and that is, anything over $500, we have to go toward statute 112 to determine whether or not it's a purchase that is authorized and can be made. And if people are staying under the $500 threshold, they're going to remain safe. It's when they get over that threshold that it becomes more dangerous. Likewise, let's assume that we are paying someone for a service. We're paying someone to, to come, I don't know, tutor, or something, whatever it might be. And we're paying them less than $500 each time they come. Well, this would then give the carte blanche, that that person would not have to register as a vendor, or an independent contractor within the district, and essentially, we could cut $500 checks every week to them. Except then the problem is, is that the board has an employee, which is not really being treated as an employee. They're, are they being treated as a 1099, or what is that?
Right.
When you can afford to pay, when you can pay $500 in one check, and then another to follow, and another to follow, and another to follow, you've undermined the purpose of this policy.
Okay.
So by being, by being above the $500, we, we compromise the integrity of the intent of this.
I believe so.
I don't, I don't want to ever be in that situation, but I think, I think the superintendent and her staff still need that ability to go back and kind of review that, why it went to 2,500 in the beginning.
Yes. So as this comes before us, actually, for, if we can just, you can work with Dr. Gullett's team and ensure that, I think that, based on what you said, that the statutory requirement is the $500, and we certainly don't want to jeopardize the integrity of what that would be. And if we in fact are doing that here, then work with the team and figure out, making sure that we're working on that together. And if team is in agreement, and Attorney Powers, then when this comes before us...
Right. And, and I can tell you, this is a separate element from the need for a contract, or the need for a vendor's app, because there are reasons we identify for whether someone needs one of those.
Right.
And as far as any, you know, lost business, or difficulty in dealing with, with any of our, our community partners, we've got, the, there are things that we have to have a contract for, and that's, that's, that's why I've outlined those and dealt with those. As to the vendor, the vendor apps, those, I've heard someone recently talk about vendor apps taking a long time. If everything that is needed for vendor app is submitted, turnaround time is less than four days. So I don't think that's a holdup in the mix. This is requiring people to get a vendor application so that we can track everything. If we're paying them more than $500 on multiple occasions, that we're able to track that, so that we know what we're doing.
And right now, the limit, according to this policy, says 2,500. So we're not actually tracking any, I mean...
Right. Well, if I had one fix I'd want to make, it would be per calendar year.
Okay.
That, that is, that's...
Right.
Very important one in my book.
Okay.
As to the $2,500 or $500, depends on how safe we want to keep staff who might not really know the purposes for it.
Right.
But somebody can very well run under this policy fine at $2,500, and they can be violating 112 left and right, and not even know it.
Right.
We don't want to put them in.
No, we don't want to.
That's why I would suggest the 500. But the per calendar year is the most important part, because you wouldn't want to see recurrent purchases of $500 52 weeks out of the year, you know?
Right. Okay. So I, I'm in full agreement with the per calendar year. I think we all are in consensus on that one. And then for you to work with Dr. Gullett and ensure that the team, this isn't going to change anything significantly. And even if it is, perhaps it happens on the procedure side, because again, if $500 is what protects all of our employees statutorily, we want to stay in the, in that range, but not wanting to hold up the team on whatever they've been doing. Y'all can work together on that. Sound good?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
And I think that part of these are a result of discussions I've had with team members who've come back to me saying, what do we do with this particular situation? And is this permissible? Because there is some ambiguity there, when you've got someone saying, well, can I pay, somebody else has already paid them X amount this year, can I pay them? And I look at it, and I think, when I see this, what I immediately think is, wow, the limiting factor should be per calendar year. But actually, it doesn't matter, under the way that the policy is currently stated, how darn much you've spent. I mean, you could have spent quite some large amount of money, and as long as you spend more, less than $2,500 for the next purchase, you're okay. Which is a sort of completely, you know, subverts the purpose.
Right.
So that would be the only one that I want to bring up for, and we'll engage another discussion with superintendent staff regarding that particular issue. But as the remainder of the 6,000s, I stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Terrific. Board, are there any questions on 6,000 section? Ms. Thoreau, Reverend Cummings, do you have anything?
No.
Most all of it, I believe, is statute-driven, all of these changes in procurement, and properties, and all of those things, purchases. I, I think we're ready to move on to the 7,000s, if you are.
Okay. As to 7,000, property, this has got a lot of diverse subject matter. Everything from wireless communication devices, to tobacco-free environment, to facilities planning. So the only common, commonality and common theme is that it is got to do with all aspects of property.
Let me back up one. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
6152.
6152, and what page number?
I'm looking at it on the screen.
Okay.
Last paragraph. Tara?
6152, yes, 415, SBA 415. So 420 in the PDF.
This is relating to the McKinney-Vento Act, and we've, we've increased the font, and have it up on your screen there.
Specifically, I thought they withheld. I thought they withheld for diploma if they owed fines.
That would generally be true, but I don't think it's true in this particular context with, under McKinney-Vento.
Because the student is homeless.
Right.
Is that it, Superintendent?
Yes. They, if they've earned it, they get the diploma. I'll have to look and see if there are any changes to this, but that's...
And the way I was, because I remember getting the call. So a kid that's not homeless, that owes fines, they can withhold their diploma. But a kid that's homeless, that owes fines, they can't hold their diploma.
That happens in college, too.
By the law, I believe so.
Well, in law, in college, everybody, whether you're homeless or not, they withhold it.
Right. Because you're paying, because you're paying for college. I mean, you're paying for college. It's not a free public education. There's no free public education in college.
May I ask a question? Is the question about participating in the ceremony, or the diploma, because they may not participate in the ceremony, but the diploma is earned?
No, it's specifically to the diploma.
Okay.
I remember getting phone calls about that specifically. I know that if they owed fines, excuse me, I notice that if they owed fines, or whatever, that they were not able to participate in the ceremony. That was any kid, correct? But this is the one that I was kind of questioning.
But you, you make a good point, Reverend Cummings, and I, obviously, I haven't had a child reach that level yet. But I know that if there are fines, library books, et cetera, et cetera, it doesn't even trigger for you to be able to pay a graduation cap and gown fee, anything like that, until that part of your account is resolved to get to that. So that's...
My experience would not be to that regard. So you have your debt list at the high school level, but a student could carry a debt to May of their graduating year, and still have purchased their cap and gown, still have purchased many things towards graduation, and have carried that debt, and it could be the eve of graduation, and students are settling that debt.
But now, and perhaps that could have been the way it was, but now that every payment is electronic, everything is in the system in RevTrack, and they're, like, they have to, someone physically has to move you past that you've paid that in RevTrack to get you to be able to pay the next thing. So I, again, don't have a student that's been in this situation. I did have a student that had library fines and could not pay for a field trip, or could not, you know, pay for a dance ticket, or something like that. So I know that there is a system that's going to put a hold on you to be able to even have an option to pay something. So I don't know if the same is true for graduation, but I'm assuming within RevTrack, because of the situations I've experienced, now that there are no checks being written, or cash being handed, everything is electronic in the system.
Do cap and gown payments go to Marion County Public Schools, or do they go to HIRF Jones directly? So that would, that would circumvent the system?
Okay.
I would imagine.
Okay.
Right? Okay.
And there isn't an addition, there isn't additional, again, haven't gone through this graduation system yet, but there isn't additional, like, graduation fee that's paid to the school for anything else, the diploma, or any, anything like that? I don't know that. I know I had to pay a graduation fee for my doctorate coming up, but that's totally different scenario. Ms. Thoreau?
Is this whole statement directly from statute?
Let me check McKinney-Vento Act. I believe it's, I believe that this is a paraphrasing of what's in McKinney-Vento.
Maybe that's why I'm, why it's...
I think we need to determine that first, because I'm also interested in, how do they determine that they have the ability?
To pay that.
Yeah. Who determines that? And what's the criteria?
Good point. I also would like, if, if, I guess this could just be a comment, but there are many times when students are carrying textbook debt from textbooks that have since been discontinued. And I often took the liberty to delete those fees as an administrator, because I did not feel it was appropriate to collect fines on materials that we no longer have in use. Because if a child hadn't lost it, it wouldn't, they would not be getting a fine, and because it's no longer in, in circulation. And so I think that it would be good to develop some procedures, potentially regarding this at the high school level, because there are kids who are carrying debt for textbooks two adoptions ago, from fourth grade. And they, you know, should they really be required to pay for a book that we're no longer using?
And Dr. James, I am completely, 100% in agreement with you, because I think what happens is, we're penalizing some kids for some stuff at, at a later stage, and that book is not even, has been gone.
That, as well as, we have students with high, high, high mobility, students in the foster system who pick up and go. And when you, when you get in and have conversation with the students regarding the debt, oftentimes, I mean, stories that cannot be created or made up, regarding, well, I remember we were staying with so-and-so, and we had to move to so-and-so, and they, you know, the book was lost, but it wasn't lost because the child was...
Negligent.
Negligent. And so there is, I think it would be good to create a procedure and give authority to some, some bodies on campuses to have that discretion.
I think that needs to be, again...
Consistent.
Consistent across the district. One of the things that bothers me the most is that one parent can get something done at one park, one school in the, in the county, and then another parent has the same issue in another school. That school is not going to even hear the conversation.
Yes.
And so when we have that consistency, it just, it makes it easier for us, it makes it easier for superintendent, all their staff, because this is the way we do it at every school, versus certain schools. So I agree.
I'll offer this. A pancake has two sides, and a student, you know, in fourth grade loses or misplaces whatever, a fourth grade textbook, they don't turn it in, that textbook is still in circulation then. So, you know, we're absorbing that cost of that textbook not being turned in, when it could have still been utilized. So there's that, too. There's a level of responsibility that everyone has to take, and I think it's important to teach that early. And, you know, my heart goes out to all of the extenuating circumstances. I think y'all know me well enough to know that. But I did just want to offer that, that wherever this goes.
Question, are those, I would think that those type of fees, or fines, textbook fines, should be resolved before that kid leaves that school.
It's, yeah, impossible.
No. Library books, I can speak to this emphatically. Library books are not, because I have a middle schooler that I had to go into the elementary school and try to resolve his debt. Oh, that was a whole different situation, because it took a couple of weeks before RevTrack caught up. And yeah, no, then we ultimately did find the book, we did find the book. But...
At the high school level, I had students who had fines and destiny from elementary school.
Oh, yeah.
Because they're going to continue to promote regardless, because academically, that's what we need to do. And then everyone just makes that assumption that the bottom line will be caught in their 12th grade year when they go to cross the stage of graduation. And so it just keeps passing, and passing, and passing, and passing, and passing.
So maybe, so maybe, maybe, maybe with that, so to keep it from going further, further, further along, that we have to figure out some type of way to impose some type of late fee for letting it just run on? Because in real life, in real life, I'm sorry, in real life, if there was a, a bill due, and you continued to not pay it, you continued to accrue fees.
If the parent is unable to make the payment, though, are we going to deny the child the education the following school year? I mean, no. So it's...
Well, that brings up why McKinney-Vento, if I may, McKinney-Vento is relevant here.
Yes, back to this policy, yes.
And that is because McKinney-Vento applies specifically to students with homelessness.
Right.
It indicates, there are three considerations as to fees. Does the fee pose a barrier to the student attending classes? Does the fee pose a barrier to the student participating fully in school activities? And does the fee pose a barrier to the student remaining in school and graduating from high school? If the answer to any of these questions is yes, the barrier must be eliminated. And that can be via us waiving the fee, via us applying for additional grants to pay for those. McKinney-Vento funds are flexible. They can be used to assist homeless students to participate in these kind of activities. They may, to some degree, be able to be used to pay down fines and debt as well. But the main point here is that prohibiting, prohibiting participation in graduation ceremonies, whatever our current stand is and policy is on that, really doesn't change here. It's only that the student can, we must still be able to have them have access to their student records, including diploma and transcripts. So we're only talking about those narrow exceptions that then allow them to take their educational achievements here, and then enter, you know, a workforce, or enter another degree of... and then enter, you know, a workforce or enter another degree of schooling. So it's it's not, we're not talking about paying everything. We're talking about that they, that these students can still get their records and their diploma and their transcripts. So.
Chair, yes.
You know what this reminds me of? It reminds me of the conversation we had about the responsibilities of schools and school boards for for notification. You know, if it can be proven that this is basically the first time that kid and families, however many families they've been with or through through the years, have been notified of that two days before graduation, well, that's a problem. But if you're being notified consistently through the years and nothing is being done about it, that is a problem. And and I agree with you, Board Member Cummings, in the real world, just blowing off your debt, so to speak, is is not a good idea. And and it needs to be addressed and there needs to be notification on our part. And there needs to be conversation on the responsible parties' part to come to what makes sense. Obviously, we don't want to deny anyone the completion of their education because of a debt or a fine. However, I will say this. Withholding the possibility for graduation and being able to walk across that stage suddenly generates financial resources to pay things like that.
I will tell you, it's an effective strategy. I've seen it at play. I mean, and honestly, there were many instances when you start making a deal. Okay, well, if you can bring me enough for this and this, I can make this one go away or whatever, because you're just trying to. But I think we should lend to Dr. Gullett to maybe create some procedures.
Because we don't want one school saying, let's make a deal and then another one dropping the hammer.
Right. Dr. Gullett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Board Member James, I made a comment about that in my notes about looking at this with our procedures because we're revising those as we speak.
And Dr. Gullett, it also lends itself, especially since we're talking primarily at the high school age. I do think as the financial literacy curriculum is is created and whatever, it would be a great lesson on one day about how you how you graduate, you know, how you get there. Because this is going to be a requirement that every graduating senior has to have. And actually talking through what debt looks like and what it would, I mean, that, this is your own personal debt potentially and scenario based, they can do whatever. But I think it would be a great addition to that to make it real world for students. So that they understand this isn't just what your parents are dealing with, this is actually real, this could prevent you or this could keep you from doing things. So.
And I can even go a little bit a step further to say that, you know, I understand debt. I understand people, especially someone that's homeless, having some challenges financially. But we want them to go, to rise above their homelessness and to be in a better position. But we also want to prepare well-rounded kids, citizens. And you can't prepare them to be well-rounded if you're saying that you can incur debt and you just blow the debt off. So even looking at some ways of how they could possibly work those debts off while they're in high school. Certain jobs around campus or something that could help, help them. So that way you have still a sense of pride that they committed, they committed to paying off that debt in such a way that it did not hurt their financial situation, but the district got something out of it. We want, we want this, I I just want people to be responsible and accountable.
Right.
That's the biggest, that's the bigger thing that I see in this.
I do want to backtrack just a little bit, talking about how these fines can occur from elementary school to high school. So what I found in my experience is a lot of our students that may not be homeless, but they're certainly struggling. And they're going, you know, mom's, dad's, grandma's, auntie's auntie's house. And they lose their library book and they lose their library book. Well, the media specials, media specials grant a lot of grace so that the children, who are usually already struggling with their literacy, are able to continue to check out books. And so there's all these alternatives that they're trying to do to keep the kids, you know, literacy moving forward. And so I think that part of the struggle that Dr. James is talking about has started on the elementary level, just providing some grace because a lot of that is out of the control of the student.
Okay. Did you have anything for us from the statute that I think we're good on that? Okay, great dialogue. I think I saw Dr. Gullett writing a lot of things. So we'll be potentially learning a little bit more about how those procedures are being implemented as that comes around.
And I apologize for going backwards after we had left that section, but that was something that was.
No, it's 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 fine that we had that conversation for sure. I wanted to just draw attention, just I think I did this before, just because this isn't anything that needs to be changed. It's just drawing attention because you guys know I've harped on this. Policy 6233, SBA 419. SBA 419, policy 6233, it's just a comment. This is item D about school-based management. And this is in policy that we're potentially about to approve, that the board encourages an emphasis on school-based management to integrate planning and budgeting at the school level, which that's something we're continuing to talk through and work on and get there. And we're not there yet and we have a lot, we have to get there. But eventually, school-based budgeting and school-based management of those budgets will potentially become a reality. And we are putting it in policy that we are putting an emphasis on it based on the way this is worded. So just drawing attention to that, as long as you all are in agreement, continue to harp on that. But I think that's the direction that the board needs to continue to go. Yes, ma'am.
Since you brought that up, I'm looking again at the statement and I'm wondering if it would be more clear to look at adding where it says on school-based management to integrate planning and budgeting at the school level. Thinking about adding the word staffing. And I know that might be too simplistic, but I still feel like there's a bit of a disconnect. Schools, again, need to understand that no one is here to retaliate against them for for making staffing requests. In fact, I think that that's what we are encouraging. You know, don't sit there and and suffer because you know you need a unit that, you know, I I think we're moving away from those formulaic unit allocations. You're a high school with this population, this number of students, so you get this, this and this. We're moving away from that, right? So if in our policy, we can be very clear about the fact that the conversation is, we want that, it's expected, it's how we're going to become a high-achieving district. In a school setting, if you know you need something, you shouldn't be afraid to ask. In fact, you should not only be afraid to ask, you should be feel encouraged and empowered to ask. Does it mean that you're always going to be told yes because there may be certain things, details that you weren't aware of? You're like, oh, yeah, now that I think about it this way, we can do it another way. There's always those details. But but the premise, I think, of what we're trying to establish here is that every school is different, every school has different needs. You may only have, Hillcrest is a fantastic example, less than 300 students, how many staff members do we have? And it's because it's the need.
So to your point, Vice Chair Thrower, while I do believe the intent is to move a bit away from the formulaic process, my understanding is we still have it in effect. And I'll give an example, say you have 998 students and really would like to have another dean. But right now, we can't have that other dean position posted until you actually reach 1,000 students. And that that has at least been my conversation with principals. You know, maybe you're three or four students away from that formulaic magic number to give you that next employee that you know you greatly need. I I think once we get to the school-based budgeting concept for planning and budgeting, that we may have that flexibility. But I I do still think we're, I know that the formulaic concept is something that just came forth in the last couple of years.
No.
Has it not been that, okay, years, sorry. My, I think we changed the formulas recently. It it wasn't, the formulas have changed, the numbers have changed. But I mean, I think that is a piece to this puzzle, that it's not just planning and budgeting, it's also planning, budgeting and staffing potentially. Dr. Gullett, how do you feel about the inclusion of that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I I support that. I I know we've had this conversation previously. The num, I would, I would summarize to say the numbers are are not sufficient. It's not the only factor, right? You could take, like Vice Chair Thrower's comment about Hillcrest to another school, the same number. I think when we look at the weighted funding formula for what it costs and the resources needed to educate our students, that's what we have to look at. What we did is we revised the the formula and created a process for request. Because, and let me, let me, let me back up. Post-pandemic, right, we are already seeing things that need to be adjusted. I think to Board Member Conrad's point earlier, there there are a lot of needs and those needs change from year to year. And so there needs to be a process in place. I'm regularly in schools and I ask, what do you need? And I'll hear about a request that makes perfect sense to me because I can see that. And so those are continually under review, but we need to get to a place where we're looking at the needs of the students. And then, of course, we have a duty and responsibility with budgeting to make sure that we're responsible and and that we operate in a in a high-performing way. So but but some adjustments are going to be needed where where, I I can share this with you. We are moving toward, I'm going to say this cautiously, to piloting what this looks like this year for some schools so that we can, we can work with some school leaders and and what this might look like. And so I'm really excited about that and and hoping that we're ready to do that this spring.
So Board, are we comfortable with the way this is worded or do we want to add the word staffing into?
Well, if I may suggest, within this particular section, this section is district budget. And this is speaking only to, I mean, this entire section is finances. And the title of this particular policy is the budget, district budget. So planning, certainly part of planning is also the staffing. But I'm not, I I believe that school-based management details or information will likely need to be spelled out elsewhere, not in this policy. So if you, if you were to add things into this policy, they might be things that your words end up disagreeing with policy in the other unless we catch it at the time. So you might consider leaving planning and budgeting as opposed to adding staffing just because staffing is sort of subsumed within planning. But under a different, under a different policy that is dealing with school-based management at the time when we choose to change anything, we now have a a lot more to write.
And if I may, Madam Chair, to Attorney Powers' comments, and thank you, Attorney Powers. I I would also say that from my seat, that what this would mean to, for me and my team is that the board supports us moving in that direction. Because as several of us have talked about previously, there's likely to be some additional cost needed to come with a new program that can sufficiently provide site-based budgeting model. We do not have that infrastructure currently. We don't have additional staff that are dedicated to being able to do that. And so we would either need to hire staff or outsource to do something to the extent that I think that we all would like to see happen. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other comments on that one. I I did have just another question on policy 6320. This is SBA page 424. And it's just a question about all of the new language about the volatility in the marketplace when it comes to purchasing. I think it's pa, it's.
Oh, yeah.
Right there. I was just curious, I know that we previously have had a bit of conversation about this in board meetings to some degree. I was interested in knowing if this is new statutory language about volatility in the marketplace or where we want to go with that, if if we need to include this language, if that's. This whole section just, I was curious about how this got recommended and if it was coming from us or if it's coming from Neola as a recommendation or statute, Attorney Powers.
This was a staff recommendation. This section of policy change, adjustments to awarded bid terms and conditions. This was one which purchasing approached me with and and legally, the language would be permissible if the if the board accepts it. So this was staff language as to what they would, what they believe would improve our ability to flexibly deal with changing demands where there is a, specifically a marketplace volatility issue that is giving us trouble with a particular vendor's bid. So we got the unfortunate problem that vendors get, they can get blacklisted if they don't sort of meet the the bid requirement that we've got. But many of these can be vendors that in the judgment of our purchasing team have been good partners with us for a long period of time. And so there is a reasonable, you know, reasonable request they have or or a reason why they can't, you know, meet a particular request and they document that to us. Well, then we would generally be faced with a choice of, okay, they get one time of doing that within a calendar year period or fiscal year period. And then after that, you know, we may need to rebid this for for new bidders and eliminate them from the bid pool, which is not what we've had an intention of doing. We don't want to eliminate people from the bid pool if if we can, if if we can avoid doing so. So that, this was language that came from purchasing department to be able to address that particular problem. And so it is completely up to the board to discuss and to adopt if it sees fit or not.
So my my only question, and this is to the board for us to discuss and and potentially for Dr. Gullett to weigh in as well, since her staff is making this recommendation. This section of policy leaves this entirely up to district staff. And I don't know if there would ever be a time that we as a board would need to come back to have additional conversation about approving something because of the volatility of the marketplace. And I I can't come up with an instance right now, but this entire policy reads basically that we're putting this entire decision in the hands of the purchasing department. And that may be very well where it needs to stay. But it says in the best interest of the school board, that the purchasing department then makes all these decisions should there be a need to make a substitute. Or obviously, they're going to provide documentation. It doesn't say the documentation comes back to the board. It just says that they would have documentation of it, substitute will be considered if the district has a continued need, et cetera, et cetera. And so I, that that's my only question and maybe I'm reading too much into how this is worded. But it looks as if, and certainly we have given our team the ability to do the job that they've set out to do because of conversation we've had previously, within the past year to two years of bids and volatility and why we have to go, and we we have had to have those conversations at the board table in the past. Don't know if if we wanted to have additional conversation here or if we're comfortable with the way this is worded.
Well, and and if staff does, if the purchasing department does need to spend more, then they would have to keep bringing it back to staff. Sorry, bring it back to the board each time that they needed to do so, if it was going to be spending anything more than was was previously approved.
But Attorney Powers, that then brings us back to questions we had multiple times where we often approve up to certain amounts. And so I I don't know if that changes that at all.
Yeah, it does on a bid. It would be different on a bid.
Okay.
But these, what you see in A through D there are already parts of our bid terms and conditions. And this is, as nearly as I can read this, what it believes, what I believe the the point here is, is to take the factors that we already have existing that as to why something may need, you know, why there is volatility, they've got to document that volatility. They've got to document that volatility. They've got to document a reason why. They can give us a proposed substitute. And then whether or not we are going to accept that substitute or not, that's within the discretion of the district. But here, it allows them to sort of rebid a particular, a particular item. If we're dealing with some instances now where, I mean, have you seen the price of paper?
Right, paper.
Pretty horrific, but you know, but literally this can be on any particular item that we might need. And then Purchasing is scrambling around trying to get documentation for what it needs. And they're having to deal with some of these vendors who we've had good relationships with for quite some time and say, well, if you're not going to honor the price, we have to kick you out of our next bid.
Right.
So.
Okay. Yes, sure, Vice Chair.
And that may be something you wish to hear from, you know, Purchasing directly about. That's up to you.
Would it be a fair statement to say the reason for this is because of the tremendous disruption to supply chain and prices and inflation triggered by the pandemic? Because I've never seen anything like this in policy before. And just looking at D, for example, the volatility self-exive vendor that continued performance of the contract would result in substantial loss or financial hardship. Well, you know, you could say, too bad, so sad. You said that you were going to do this at a certain price. But that's not the whole story. The whole story is within the rest of these statements that speak directly to extenuating circumstances, extreme extenuating circumstances, documented extenuating circumstances and options that the district does have to continue or not continue. So for the, it's important for the full context of this paragraph to be communicated publicly. And for everything I'm reading in here, there is a piece of me, Chair, that's thinking like you are that, well, if it's going to increase it by 2%, 5%, 10%, whatever it is, that the board needs to be made aware, but not create such a burdensome situation on the process that we end up not having paper in our classrooms. You know, unintended consequences, right? So I don't know if there is a way to make this any more substantial in terms of accountability so that the school board doesn't get blindsided by something. I don't think that that's the intent of this. So I'm open to any suggestion that makes that even more clear, the intent. But when it's read in totality, then it speaks pretty well for the times that we're in. It's my hope, prayer and intention that we're going to get past this and get back into more typical economic times and this won't be necessary anymore. But we are where we are and I think it's important to acknowledge that.
Agreed. Are you all fine with that? Well, I mean, we'll leave it in as is, but I, Dr. Gullett, just make note that we've had some questions about how.
Accountability.
Yeah, the accountability piece to that. And if there would be a reason to adjust it in any way or that maybe just on a procedure side that we can.
Yeah, and may I suggest that if, from hearing what multiple board members have said on this one, it may simply be that we could solve a lot of those concerns by adding a line indicating that staff shall notice the board when changes or adjustments are made. So that would.
Sure.
You know, that would.
And that may cover it.
Ensure that you then have notice of it and can discuss it, talk about it and see if there's, you know, another direction you want to go.
I think that's appropriate. Just to ensure that there is a potential level of accountability. I know that a previous board member had a lot of concerns about this and I'm not going to go back and rehash the past. But just the fact that this is now being inserted after we've had multiple discussions over the past year and a half, if we had something just to at least add that extra layer of accountability there, I think that would just add, yeah, be sufficient. However, Dr. Gullett's team wants, or you guys work on, you guys work on that. There's another one. You guys ensure that where that line needs to go, that, you know, if the changes are made.
We've placed it.
Did you? I can't even tell where you placed it. Everything's green.
Staff shall notice the board.
Oh, perfect.
Or adjustments are made.
Okay, love it. Dr. Gullett?
Madam Chair, I concur with the attorney. I think that's a great solution.
Okay, perfect.
Also, one more to that time.
Oh, actually this day was not noticed for Attorney Powers. Were we, how long were we public noticed for this meeting today?
Was it all day?
All day.
It was until 12 o'clock.
No, that was specifically not to end at 12 o'clock.
On the ads, there's no given, on the ads, there's no given time. It just says, a special administrative work session that begins at nine.
Okay, but if the board, if what I'm hearing is the board would like to break for lunch or for a period of time, we certainly can.
Just for everyone's notice, my hard stop is 12:45.
Correct. I believe previously we had said that these three meetings would be from nine to 12. I believe that was Chair Cummings' recommendation.
Okay.
That was the previous meetings. This one specifically, we said this one, it was to be an all-day meeting.
We were trying to finish it up.
Okay.
We're getting close.
I know we are. I have a couple of items that I do need the board to discuss before Vice Chair Thrower leaves today. Is there, are there any other comments in the 6,000 sections? Excuse me, 6,000 section? And then perhaps we can kind of take a break from policy for just a moment and let me discuss a couple of items while we're all together, if you're okay with that. Does anybody have any other comments in the 6,000 section? And can I, can I ask a collective question? Do we have significant questions in 7,000, 8,000, 9,000? As you all have taken notes along the way. I don't, but if you know what you have coming up, if you don't mind, just, I hate to do them all in one big blanket to say, okay, we're only going to talk about this for right now. But I do want to ensure that I have a couple of other things we discuss.
No, I'm good.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, okay. Vice Chair Thrower says that she doesn't have, Ms. Conrad? Okay, so why don't we, can we stop, do we have another date set for policies? We do not, okay.
No, we'll have to create another work session date.
Okay.
Can we do that?
Do we need to do that? I mean, it is.
If we are, I mean, we don't have another date set, is what I'm telling you. If you're, if you're meaning discontinue this now and pick up where we left off, we'd have to do that at, we'd have to.
Advertise a new meeting.
A new meeting.
And it's only three sections that we would need to really go through.
Right.
Right. I, this is me, I think we really need to be able to review these. I don't want to just go through.
Agreed.
Rubber stamping, anything. And I think we got time that we can possibly set up another date within a week or so. Am I right? Attorney Powers?
I'll see what's on, we have to advertise it, so.
Right.
We need 14.
Do we need to pull out calendars?
14 days of advertisement, so.
So Board, I would be comfortable with us stopping right here on policy today and saying, let's see if we can come up with another one. It may be a very short meeting. We only have three sections to go.
Is it possible, Madam Chair, Elena, that we can advertise and be back here next Monday and do the same thing? And knock it out? That's not enough time?
That's not enough time.
14 days of advertisement.
Seven days.
Seven days, seven whole days.
You're saying 14 days.
14 days.
Oh, 14 days.
Oh, 14 days?
14 days, okay, so not before the end of, we'd have to have it in January.
Or on Christmas break then.
I mean, we can certainly meet, but I think the.
The district is closed, so all the team who's doing what they're doing won't be here, I don't believe.
So we'd be coming into.
Coming into January. Because we don't have another work session.
I mean, are we meaning just not to continue this today and discontinue now or see how much further we were going to get through or what's the pleasure of the board? I mean, it's, because it strikes me if you're, if you're meaning that we want to not, we want to take more time to review this on our own, we can do the last three sections on another day. Unless you felt that it was not, you wanted more time to, I mean, you, do you want to do this today or no? I mean, that's, if you don't want to push through these today, then we have to set it for another time. It has to be 14 days from now. So I would suggest early to mid-January. And then from there, we'll need a 28-day period before adoption and public hearing.
Right.
We can just push on again.
Okay, well, I know I have three items that I need to talk to you guys about before Ms. Thrower leaves. So that, I didn't realize that she was going to be leaving in 30 minutes. So let's take a break for just two seconds on policy, not taking a break literally. But we do need to have a quick conversation. While we've been in this meeting today, Tina Pinkinson from Florida School Board Association has sent to us the master board program and it is requiring our signature. This is requiring a public conversation for us to ensure that we are all understanding that the board is going to go into the master board program and our intent to participate. What this is asking for and this, again, I know we kind of had a little bit of conversation with FSBA while we were there, but we are having a master board or a training essentially set aside this Thursday morning that we were going to have like as a board introduction. FSBA is able to come in and actually begin our master board training on that, on that date. We had kind of talked about how we could make that and facilitate that and they actually are able to come in. So if we are in consensus, Board, that FSBA will be providing that for us on this, beginning this Thursday and that there are a total of 20 hours of training that have to be a part of the master board forum. This is just the first section of that with some onsite training that we'll be requiring. It does, they do ask for our printed names and signatures on this form. So that is if we are all in consensus and I'm seeing heads nodding, so, okay, terrific. Dr. Gullett, I think your signature also is needed there. The other couple of things I had, with our upcoming board meetings, I've been speaking with the team and the way our inspiration and pledge has been happening in our board meetings. I, this is an opinion of mine and as your board chair, I would like for you to hear me out on this and see if we can have consensus on this as well. I've seen other boards do it this way and I would like to offer this option for us that each one of us as board members are assigned a board meeting date. And I've actually worked out a calendar. We all would have four throughout the year. And where we would then say, I want to bring in said community member, said school, said whomever, and you can work with the team on who that might be, but to actually offer the inspiration and pledge where it is someone from the community who's coming in and addressing us. It would be separate and apart from recognitions. Because in my opinion, the way we've handled inspiration and pledge occasionally has been we've had a team of students or we've had a group of students, an employee, whomever that might be. And whereas we often always need to give them the recognition that they deserve if they're providing our inspiration and pledge, sometimes it has caused a bit of a challenge for us to know when we need to pause and go down and take pictures and when we don't and when we need to move forward. So this is an opinion certainly, but I would like to see us go to where the board members are actually responsible for providing whomever that person might be. Certainly Elena needs to have plenty of notice to know who it is for the script. But the calendar, the way it works out, and I've already kind of created a little color-coded calendar if you all are in agreement, that I would take January 10th and Vice Chair Thrower would take the next date in January and we would each just on a rotating basis have a board meeting, again, four throughout the year that we'd each be responsible for, to say, I want said community member to come in and offer the inspiration and pledge that day or whomever you choose. I mean, it could be your family, it could be whomever. But do the inspiration and pledge. And then the teams separately create a section in the agenda to say, and here are the recognitions that we want to provide, if it's employees, if it's a school, if it's the Bellevue High School football team that came in that day. That one drew my attention because I realized we didn't go down and actually take a picture with that whole group. All the pictures were for them just lining up down the aisle. And that kind of triggered me going, okay, how can we separate this and make it where there's someone doing the inspiration and pledge? And then all of the other recognition that the team wants to bring forth could be separate. Board, how do you feel about that? Because if you're okay with it, I have the calendar and I can send it to Attorney Powers and he can send it out to us.
Who is currently lining up the inspiration for the pledge?
It's happening internally and they just choose. And it wouldn't change necessarily how they're choosing because it may be that, it's often people that they're wanting to give recognition to. And so that, that part, in my opinion, wouldn't change. Dr. Gullett, is that the way you see it?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We discuss inspiration and pledge in our weekly cabinet meetings as a team. So we could certainly do the recognitions.
Madam Chair, while I completely understand your reasoning behind this, I don't, I don't, I think it would be, it could be very problematic. And the reason I say problematic is as individual board members, we may miss something that they would not have missed. I think we need the ability to be able to make a recommendation to them. And I've done it in the past. I've said, hey, there's a group of kids or a mentoring group or something that I would like to recommend to them to put on there. But I don't think we should take that responsibility on because I, I see us missing a group of people and it coming back to haunt us in more than one way, in a negative way. Because one, one way you take families off, parents off, is to overlook my child when they did something positive and you didn't acknowledge them. For instance, there was, there was one here that came and we didn't take the picture. And I asked them to come back so that we could go down and take the picture. So I don't want to put us in a situation as a board where we miss something because we, our intent is always good. I get it, our intent is good, but I just think that it puts us in the possibility of missing something. And if we leave it with the superintendent and her staff, we make, we can make a recommendation. If there's someone that we feel so strongly about, make their recommendation. They can still take that person and put them on there. But I don't want to put it on us.
Chair, one thing I do like about this idea is Dr. Gullett is, you know, pulling things and bringing in inspiration for the flag. I do think it gives us the opportunity to represent our districts and what's going on because as a new board member and trying to get out and reach all of the schools and all of the departments, it is quite a challenge. And so with the connections we make within our district-assigned schools, even though we represent the entire community, it gives us a chance to showcase and visit with our schools directly that maybe that conversation, because maybe it's not a community accolade where we would give them the chance to be showcased and it might be evened out a little more as far as throughout the district.
So to give a little bit more clarity on what my thought process was on this, it wasn't necessarily that it would be a school-based person or even a student that would be offering the inspiration and pledge. So hear me out on this. There could be potential that if any one of us wanted to have a community member or a religious leader or someone else to come in and actually offer an inspiration or pledge, certainly at their own discretion, whatever they want to say. Without us dictating that it's a school-based person and they're here representing their school and it's an administrator representing their school, the folks on our team may not feel the liberty to share actually the potential religious inspiration that they might want to, to the board. And if we opened that up to each board member, just being assigned a day and you assign a person and they come and share directly from their heart and they're from the community and they're just whomever they are, then they would have the freedom and the liberty to share however they felt. And I have seen other boards do this, so I want to go back to that. I've seen other boards do this and this is where sometimes those are televised, sometimes they're not. I mean, there's different ways that boards have done that. But in order for what my vision of this was, they've accomplished it with that rotating basis that they, each board member can bring in whomever they want, whenever they want, based on the calendar. And then the person sharing that inspiration shares from their heart without any concern about.
Madam Chair, what happens when a board member wants to bring someone in that could be very controversial, that could be very polarizing or very politicizing? Once again, we would have put ourselves in a position where. Once again, we would have put ourselves in a position where we cast a negative light on the board, because once we give them the mic, that's free rein. And I, I, again, I understand your intent behind it, but I see so, we're kind of coming out of a, a season where we make us settle some things down, and we, 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 you've been here, we've had the people say, just let the kids eat dirt, and all that kind of crazy stuff. I think that we could be opening ourselves up to something where we have no control, and then the superintendent has to try to deal with this, our staff has to try to deal with, Kevin has to try and re-navigate what was said, when we had no control over what was said. That's, that's, that's the issue I'm having.
If I may, I, I would, I think I would like to second what Reverend Cummings is saying. I'm not sure that I'd like to open us up to the opportunity for public individuals to share remarks. We are all elected, which means our positions could change, right, someone sitting in our seat could change, but also, I think that I would, would prefer that if we were to move in this direction, I think as Ms. Conrad has said, we would continue to make sure that the people sharing at our board meetings are individuals related to our schools specifically, employees of our Marion County School District, for me. I, and I personally don't believe that it, it wasn't working previously. I don't disagree with the idea, but I think that it would be important to maintain it being school-based.
Okay.
I agree.
Then my final, my final statement on this, and I promise I won't say anything else. What happens when we invite someone, one of us invites someone, and that person that we invite goes off on a religious tangent that violates certain things that the governor has said that they shouldn't even talk about? Then we're that board member that brought them to the board, and we put them, we gave them, we gave them the platform, or, or says something about religion, a certain religion that we may not completely agree with, and here it is, once again, we've opened that door that's outside of education. And here it is, we're dealing with another issue, another distracted issue that we should be concentrating on, student outcomes, and, and, and we, we just created that scenario.
So, yes, Vice Chair, did you have anything to add? Because I was gonna, so I'm hearing from, okay, go ahead. You just paused and didn't respond when I asked if you had anything to add.
No, I was just waiting for my opportunity. From, from where, from where I am with this, it's just new information, and, and I'm hearing it for the first time, so I would need to know what school boards are doing this. At my own leisure, I'll pull up their meetings, hear and see, you know, what they're doing. I feel very comfortable with how our presentations and inspirations and pledges have been going. I'm not sure I want to dedicate the time and energy to changing it at this point. I'm not really sure what the benefit really would, would be. I'm always willing to think it over, but again, I, I'm definitely not ready to make a commitment today, and I would just need some more information. It's an interesting idea. There's boards, obviously, that are doing it, and it's working for them, so, you know, why not take a look? But I'm not ready to make that decision today, based on the conversation I've heard. I, I also agree that I, we've talked a little bit about staying in our lanes today, and we are representatives, you know, we, we are the Marion County School Board, and, and school is our business, so anyone we bring in, I want it to be related to education of our children, helping every student succeed. That, that would be my parameters.
Thank you, Board. I, I believe I have heard you loud and, loud and clear. The last thing, I will comment on that, and then I'll go to the next thing. And I'm speaking as an individual board member, not as your chair, right now. My, my intent by this was, I, as an individual board member, would like to see our school board meetings begin with prayer. That's me as an individual board member. I would like to see that happen. Other elected bodies do it, even within our county. We do not and haven't for some time, and this was potentially going to be a way that, should we choose to have someone from the community, they would have had the freedom and the ability to do that for us, whereas some boards, again, rotate, and the board member actually does it, it kind of depends on the part of the county that you're, or the part of the state that you're in, but that was the crux of where I was trying to go with this. The unique thing about who we are as a school board is because there's very, very specific law about what schools can do when it comes to prayer versus what everybody else can, honestly. So, whether you want to look at that as fair or not, I mean, that's just the way it is. So, that was the crux of why I was considering having this as an option, but it seems as if that is not the direction we want to go, so we will move on. The other thing that I, yes, sorry.
Yes, because now that changes the game, you know, it's, saying it from the beginning would have been helpful, because then I would have had a better understanding of why we were even talking about this. So with that being said, this board is very committed to following statute. This board is very committed to doing things right, very committed to shining a very positive light on everything that we do. Well, right now, it is part of statute for every school to start every day with a moment of silence. So, that's something I could get behind right now. In fact, it crossed my mind many times, that it is just a great opportunity to get ready to have a, a great and positive meeting. So, if, if that's what we're thinking about, and the, and the actual premise of this whole offering, then I would offer that out, as let's mirror what is being done in our schools, and start with a moment of silence. I, I could get behind that today.
Now, question. That, I think, Chair, your initial was veiled. You should have just said prayer, but.
Understood, but, but I also want to ensure that where we're saying the word inspiration...
I get what you're saying, but the, the other thing with that, even with the prayer or the moment of silence, we agreed to a moment of silence, because that's inclusive of everybody. If we start having different folk come, and I'm, y'all know, y'all know who I am, I've never been, I'm unapologetically who I am. If we open that up, you have to be understanding that freedom of religion, you have to open it up to, Attorney, tell me if I'm wrong, you have to open it up to all. So, if we get a Satanist that want to come here and pray, we're opening it up to that person coming here and praying, and we have to deal with that. I, I could tell you personally, I wouldn't be here at that meeting. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't participate, and I could tell you have like a huge, huge community outcry, because that we, we would have, we would have created the stage for that to happen. So, we have to be, yes, we all may be of like faiths or like-minded in certain areas, but then there's going to be that group that's going to be waiting for the opportunity to come in and go further, much further than what we are ready to deal with.
We've prayed right here on the days before, and, and you've let us, Reverend, and you've let us, Allison, you know, but I, I said what I said, so that's where I am.
Again, I, I believe how other school board members have navigated, other school boards around the state have navigated this issue is because they assign a board meeting to a board member, and then it's up to that board member, and whomever wants to reach out to that board member for their assigned date to request Attorney Powers.
Was that to request Attorney Powers?
Yes, they requested your assistance. No, Attorney Powers, go ahead.
It is common in Florida for school boards to open their meetings with a prayer and invocation. What we've had problems with in other districts, or in other counties, I should say, there was a 2019 case that I just, that struck my mind, so I looked it back up. It's Williamson versus Brevard County, and in that, it was, everything in that case indicated that, yes, it's perfectly fine for there to be invocations or prayers prior to a, a meeting. Selection criteria are important, and in fact, the kind of selection process that, that you're describing, I think we would need to, we would need to update or, or, or work on a little bit, because in the Brevard County case, individual commissioners took selecting the person to give, they took turns selecting the person to give the invocation, and because their selection resulted in exclusion of, in, of different groups, that was specifically one of the reasons why the selection criteria were not met, and therefore it was violative. So, nothing violative about giving the prayer, but if you're going to select the selection criteria for how to do it, and the selection criteria is very broad, like, you know, each one of you pick one, then that can be violative in itself. So, yeah, there's nothing wrong with starting each with a prayer, an invocation, a proceeding at our choice, but we have to figure out the proper selection of doing that, and unfortunately, it's not just a selection of each board member picks one, because that would be the one that's going to violate, and even though other school boards may be doing it that way. Williamson versus Brevard County, that's the one that, that we've got to look out for, because, you know, I can jeopardize that and see if there's more recent updates to it, or any further discussion within chatter among school board attorneys, but that, that's the one that, that immediately comes to mind as, as something we've got to, we've got to pay attention to, to selection. But there's certainly nothing that stops us from doing it.
Chair Campbell, I just want to say, I do love the idea of the diversity and, and starting our meetings with prayer and inspiration, so I appreciate you bringing that forward, and maybe there'll be further discussion.
Very good. So the other thing that I had for us is school board committee assignments. In the past, and this is where I'm also going to need Attorney Powers, because I was going to try and have this conversation with you prior to now, in the past, this has been sole chair discretion. You will see lots of blanks there, because currently those are all of the spots that board members have the ability to serve in committees, and I'll just, for the record, I'll read them off. The Central Florida School Boards, excuse me, the Central Florida Public School Boards Coalition Liaison, Community Council Against Substance Abuse, or CASA, Department of Juvenile Justice Council, the Already Selected Florida School Board Association Advocacy Liaison, which was already chosen, that is myself, and then the alternate is Nancy Thrower, the Public Education Foundation Board of Directors, Public Schools Advisory Committee. We each are automatically assigned to planning and zoning boards and the municipality-county liaison based on our geographical locations. So Lori Conrad is assigned to the city of Bellevue, Eric Cummings to the city of Dan Ellen, I'm assigned to the city of Ocala, Sarah James is assigned to both the city of McIntosh and city of Reddick, and Nancy Thrower is assigned to Marion County. Nancy Thrower and Community Representative Gwendolyn Dawson are also assigned to the Value Adjustment Board through the clerk, county clerk's office. Those are voted upon by the board, so those are currently, we'll see those again in May. But the additional committee assignments, Architect Selection Committee, Insurance Committee, inter-local technical working group, Site Selection Committee, Code of Student Conduct, and Student Progression Plan. When I became a board member, my fellow board members who were already on the board at the time may remember, I came to my very first meeting saying, put me to work, tell me what I can do, tell me what I'm committing. And so, this listing, in my understanding, had been chair's sole discretion. Attorney Powers has led me to think that it's possible that our policy now may prevent this to be sole chair discretion, so we need to have, and I know that other board groups around the state have actually just recently voted on committee assignments, so I, I want to put this out there to you all. My original thought, if it was my sole discretion, was to, here, I'm passing this out to you with blanks on it, tell me if there's something in particular that you're really interested in, and then I'll assign you to that or something similar, or I'll take it all, if four of you want to do the same committee, then obviously that's not going to work. But Attorney Powers, can you direct us on how we need to do committee assignments?
Yes, so it appears that when we updated our policies, one of the consequences of the policy updates was that it was specific as to, the school board may establish committees and subcommittees as the need arises. Now, we've got, there was an exception in statute that allows for it to be the designee of the school board to select those committees, but we don't have that under our new policy. So, if the board was going to be, sorry, if the chairperson of the board was going to be the one selecting who sits on what committees, then that would have to come through the board's appointment of the chairperson to do so. Now, secondly, with a number of these committees, these committees, in many cases, are required to be publicly noticed, they're required to have public, public participation in some cases, and that means that, that it really should be supervised by the board as a whole, and should have individuals from the board who are on those committees reporting back to the board regularly as to what they're, what they're doing. So, where we are at this point is that, as to committees right now, the superintendent can appoint committees of her staff or of public to investigate something, the, or to look more into a particular item, but as is required, as one of the school board's duties under, I think it's 1001.43, it would be that the board as a whole has to vote as to the committee assignments, unless we specifically recreate the policy which said, or create the policy which says that it's the board chair who would initially appoint. Now, I will also say that with this new set of policies, one thing that, that came to my attention here is that the, that that is anticipated to happen at the organizational meeting, which I'm going to have to look into how we can possibly do that in an election year where people are coming on that aren't known, they can't have any participation in it whatsoever, if that's the case. So I'll have some, some suggestions for how we address that problem in the future. I don't have adequate suggestion now. What I can tell you is that as to the committees that are listed and that the board chair is speaking about right now, this conversation needs to occur, that everybody needs to decide which, which committees they're going to be on, and then we'll need to assign those and move forward from there and fix this problem by next year.
So again, the way we had done it before was not subject to this policy, because we just approved this policy, so the chair had always done it, and, and, you know, we all, as, when you both had served as chair, you just said, here's your committee assignment, here's your, so I was like, prepared to do that, and then Attorney Powers said, yeah, hold on.
Rain on the parade.
There's more.
There's more, Madam Chair, because even though we had that authority, I don't think any of us did it that way. I think there was still conversation about where there were better fits. I know that twice, because some of us inherited certain...
Yes, and the two that I inherited were de facto committees that weren't in operation.
When some things changed, such as, I can tell you, I inherited the, the Central Florida Public School Boards Coalition Liaison when Ms. McCall left the board. I didn't just inherit it, I didn't ask for it.
Right.
I got it. But I think there was always a, a kind of a conversation between the board, except for maybe the value adjustment one. That was the one that, that's the one that the chair pretty much had sole authority over.
What's value adjustment? I learned a lot.
And so, I, personally, I, I would like to stay where I'm at on the committees that I'm on, other than that Central Florida Public School Boards Coalition Liaison, because I, my time is not allowing me.
Well, the challenge with that, Reverend Cummings, and, and I appreciate that, I certainly do, the challenge with that is, you were assigned to a lot of committees, and that doesn't open up...
No, if, if, tell me the ones that I was assigned to.
Okay.
Because I can tell, I know the ones that I attended.
Sure.
I can tell you I attended this, um...
So you're assigned to...
Education.
Yes, you were assigned to Central Florida Public School Boards Coalition, which I actually have been attending all year.
Right.
You were assigned to... You were assigned to CASA, you're assigned to Department of Juvenile Justice, you're assigned to Public Ed Foundation Board, and you're assigned to Code of Student Conduct.
I know, I want, I'll tell you what.
[laughing]
Public Education and the Code of Student Conduct, I can remain those.
Okay, and.
The other ones, like I said, the, the Central Florida Public School Board Coalition, I don't know if you were the alternate or whatever, but.
I just started attending because I was the advocacy liaison, and so I thought that that was in, it kind of went together. The, the Public Ed Foundation, I believe the way their side actually reads is that they have a designated non-voting seat for the chair, or his or her designee, is the way it reads, I, I believe, at least that's my understa, so again, I, I wanted to leave all of them open, because I wanted to, to express to, I, I remember how it was coming on to the board, and the two that I was assigned to were the architect selection committee, and, or, no, I think it was the site selection committee, and at that time it wasn't called the technical working group, it was, but that was what it was, and as you know, it just started working again this year. And so when I came on, the two committees I was assigned to weren't in operation. And I know as a new board member, that was not a comfortable position for me to be in, I wanted to get to work, and I wanted to see how I could work for the board. So I, I don't know how the best way is to work this out, for us to each say what we would be interested in doing, or, I, I know personally, I have expressed interest in the Code of Student Conduct through the years, that doesn't mean that we need to upset the apple cart, because I know that you've been serving on it for many years. Student Progression Plan, as an opinion, I think that one of our educators would be a good fit for that, but I don't know who that wants to be. I believe that Ms. King sat on that for multiple years. That would be something that I would not be as familiar with as, as something that you all have been doing before. So Attorney Powers, I would love for you to help direct us in how is the easiest way for us to come to some resolution on this. If it is something that does have to go before us for a vote, then we're going to need to find a meeting and we're going to do that.
Well, via consensus here, you, the board can, I mean, as long as we're discussing it publicly like this, via consensus, we can.
Okay.
Choose how we're going to happen here. Now, I will say, I, I didn't hear who said that they were interested in keeping or not keeping Code of Student Conduct, but that is typically one that, that the board chair tends to have a lot to do with, and, and I didn't know if, if Reverend Cummings was intending to maintain that this year or not, but.
I was on, I was on that committee, whether I was the chair or not, same with the Public Education Foundation.
Okay, right.
So those, so to say that that's specific to the chair.
No, and I don't mean to imply it is.
Okay, okay.
I meant that it, it, my experience has largely been with you being on the, on the Code of Student Conduct Committee, and it may be something that if you were wanting to relinquish that, that should go then to the board chair, but that's, there's no policy on it that indicates that we have to do it that way.
So should we just, yeah, Vice Chair.
Thanks, and, and the interest, because I do need.
Right, looking at the time.
I would be thrilled to continue the work on the technical working group until it actually comes to completion. It would be difficult, I think, at this point, to do that any differently, just because of where we are in the cycle. So I would love to have the opportunity to actually get that finished and have our updated ILA. And to me, that bleeds nicely into site selection committee, architect selection committee, and I'd also would be happy to work on the insurance committee, who know my thoughts about the breast cancer and, and that whole initiative. I'd love to have the opportunity to work on the insurance, insurance committee, and, and I don't mind keeping value of adjustment board for now, because we would talk about that in May anyway, is that correct?
Yes.
Because then that's when it changes. And I think that is good experience for someone to have. I will have done it then for four years.
Wow, okay.
So if.
And I have been the representative on the insurance committee for two years now, I believe, as soon as, yeah, I think.
Want to continue?
I, I don't have to, and that's why I, I didn't know if either one of you or Reverend Cummings had any interest in going on to the insurance committee with our self-insured health plan. I, I know that our, our team is going to be interested in knowing who that person is, is going to be, because they, they have, I think we've had one meeting since the school, maybe two year, two meetings. But I, I agree with Ms. Thrower on the interlocal technical working group, let's just, I mean, if you all are in consensus, that makes complete sense there. The site selection and architect selection, I mean, those will be, I mean, we're, we're probably.
They're going to be defunct for a while.
Right, they're going to be defunct for a while, so.
That we know of.
That, right, right. So I don't, I don't know, again, consensus, do you guys have opinions one or the other?
I think if Nancy wants to take on all four of those, and that, I'm comfortable with her taking on all four of those.
Okay.
And, and I'll continue with value adjustment board at least until May, which is the natural end to that board's functions, and then it moves into a new cycle, so we can renew that conversation.
Okay.
Then.
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I'd like to do the student progression plan.
Okay.
All right, that's fine.
Okay. So Ms. Conrad, for the student progression plan, that's okay with me, if it's okay with you all. So let's start at the top, because we kind of work from the bottom up, let's start at the top. So Central Florida Public School Boards Coalition Liaison, again, I've been sitting in on those meetings with Dr. Gullett, but there's no reason that I absolutely have to be. You all attended the breakfast with us, and so that's a great start to this, we're going to have a new leader, Abby Sanchez from Seminole is the new leader there. So if anybody else wants to, as Eric said.
I say it should be you.
You say it should be me, unless either one of you want to take it on. It, it really doesn't, I mean, it's, it's a.
I'm concerned, how many do you have, how many?
At this point, I don't have any, other than being the advocacy liaison, and then the city of Ocala. I mean, I sit on planning and zoning, but, but we haven't gone through the whole list yet. So, I mean, it, it doesn't matter. It is a great opportunity, it's just once a month, video calls, really, to kind of know what the priorities are that, that they're, but it's, it's a great, like, foot in the door committee if either one of you want to do it, so.
Wouldn't mind doing it if it's not something that you have to do.
It, I don't believe it's something I have to do, Dr. Gullett, but if you would like to do it.
It's not something that you have to do, but I think, I was on it prior to COVID. I was the alternate prior to COVID, and it does, it did require some travel.
It doesn't any longer, they're all Zoom meetings.
Oh, wow.
At least they have been this whole.
They've been Zoom.
They've been Zoom, or go to meeting or something.
Good point, though, you mentioned bring up alternates too, because are we designating alternates now, or just as, on an as needed basis, we fill them in?
The only one that we have a designated alternate for is the FSBA advocacy liaison, because they require us to have an alternate. But at this juncture, I don't think that we've had alternates on anything else.
If someone else wants to be the alternate for that, that's fine with, with me, you know.
I think we have to vote on, though, I think we vote on that at, the, I don't, I don't remember how that works.
Well, then we can just.
We definitely voted on it, because they asked us to, and I sent, that's how I found that you were the alternate, because I was looking back on emails when I sent that out. They may ask us to vote on that again, coming up.
Well, if someone has a burning desire, I want to honor that, we have new people on the board, but at the same time, you know, I'm good to go regardless.
So Lori, if you want to be our liaison to the Central Florida School Boards Coalition, I think that actually would be a great opportunity to kind of get in and learn what all they're doing. Sometimes they have really great speakers, actually the upcoming, and we all have the opportunity to participate. So when they have their calls, it's not required, you know, one way or the other. I think Manny Diaz actually is their January speaker. She, I think Abby got that confirmed. The Community Council Against Substance Abuse is a committee of, on the, with the Marion County Children's Alliance. I, I think you've been representing us on that, or your name was on the list. I was a CASA member about 18 years ago, long, long ago, before they even were a function of the Children's Alliance, but I'm not sure what the responsibilities are.
I never met with that group.
Okay.
I don't even know what that group meets.
They, they do, I know they're a part of the Children's Alliance, but I'm, I'm not sure what work they're doing. I think they, and maybe this, Dr. Gullett, are you on the Children's Alliance Board, or is?
That's correct, Madam Chair, I'm on the board.
Okay.
As the superintendent.
Okay, because I knew that they had like a designated spot for someone. Well, maybe we can get a little bit more info, I, I'm sorry, Reverend Cummings, your name was listed there, so I just kind of had thought that there was a meeting happening of some kind.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was with the Department of Juvenile.
Department of Juvenile Justice Council. Okay, so we have some committees that we don't know anything about?
Nothing about.
Interesting. All right, well, maybe we just leave those blank. I mean, the intention here was to try to get more participation, and we don't even know if these committees are operating. So maybe we can do a little bit more research on both of those committees and see what their function has been, or what they're doing, if they still.
Dr. Gullett, if you're, are you, if you're on the board for CASA?
Or the Children's Alliance.
Children's.
Or Children's Alliance, okay, I was going to say, if you're on the board, then do they meet, but.
Yeah, it's the Children's Alliance, and this is like a work group out of the Children's Alliance. I, I think CASA's still doing work, but I don't really know what that is. Okay. Then we have the Public Ed Foundation Board, and at this point, it really is up to Eric, if you want to continue in that role. How about, I take one of them, either the Code of Student, or actually, Sarah, you haven't been assigned to anything yet, so what are we going to do here? Unless you're good with?
I mean, I would enjoy sitting on a committee, so.
Okay.
I certainly have lengthy experience in the Code of Conduct, and would gladly sit on the Code of Conduct as a former administrator, having processed discipline referrals many a time. I think I could speak to our Discipline Progression Plan and our Code of Conduct, so that would be fine. I would gladly sit on the Public Ed Foundation, I, whatever, whatever works.
Okay, what is the Public School Advisory Committee? Attorney Powers, is the Public School Advisory Committee the same thing as the Technical Working Group? They're, they're both listed in the.
Yeah, I'd spoke about this.
Yes, sorry, I.
The fact, no, with, with you. The Public School Advisory Committee, there's, the, the working group, within the working group, there, it's, it's got a subset of the things that the Public School Advisory Committee is doing, but it's not, there's broad overlap, but they're not completely the same.
Okay.
The working group is a separate item under its.
Function of the new interlocal agreement?
Right. And it, it may need to be, that there might need to be anything from language changes to clear roles defined, or the roles may need to be combined. But as of right now, they are the working, the, the technical working group and the Public School Advisory Committees, those are separate.
Two separate.
They're still separate, even though they cover a lot of the same material.
And, and let me, let me go ahead and throw this in here now, so I'll be kind of very clear about why I felt so strongly about the two boards that I asked for. Historically, there is a lack of minority participation or exposure on those two boards specifically. That was part of the reason why I got there and have been there. So that was the Code of Student Conduct and the Public Ed Foundation.
Because that wasn't the, I mean, I was on the Public Ed Foundation Board before I was a board member, and that, when I'm thinking around at the table, that wasn't the case then, but that, maybe that is now.
Case now, I think there's three, counting me, there would be three African Americans on the Board of Directors. And with the Code of Conduct, in the past, you had more minority on the board, you had two, exactly, so there was more representation around the district on different things, so. Just to give you that information.
And can there be more than one board member assigned to a committee, or?
Typically not, unless as an alternate, because that will, that will then lead to situations in which.
Free of sunshine.
Board members would be, you know, potentially communicating about something that they may ultimately have to vote on.
Thank you.
I mean, we certainly have to approve both the progression plan and the Code of Student Conduct, that, I mean, we'll have public hearings and all of that about them, but actually sitting in the working committee, board members have sat in those roles, just one board member.
Is this a decision we have to make today?
That, that's.
I, it's not, I mean, I, I just know that there's work that's already started in some of these, and that, again.
I'm just, maybe it would be appropriate to confirm information regarding CASA and the JJC. I certainly would have no problem serving as a committee member for the JJC or CASA. I, I think we should find out the specific information regarding what those committees do.
And if they're even.
And if they're meeting. And I think, I don't know how this list was created, but I would also venture to offer that there are other community organizations, like the Early Learning Coalition, that would potentially be an organization, and maybe Ms. DeBec or someone like that would be an appropriate person to speak to regarding how these groups were created, and if in fact, there are other groups within our community that may be appropriate to add.
I didn't understand that.
Me neither, no, I'm just, maybe appropriate to add.
So this was the group, or this was the list that I know has been on Elena's computer for however many years it's been, because it just continued, that's where I got it. I think it was at least 2017 or something.
At least the five years that I've been in this position, it was there, and prior to that, with Brenna Flock, or that's been the list.
Right.
Where it came from, how it was created, I, I can't, can't speak to that.
Right. So to your point, though, Dr. James, there may be additional, I mean, I know I, not because of any other reason, but I'm on the United Way Education Vision Council, but that's because I was in that role prior to becoming a school board member. But is that something that a school board member needs to sit on? Is that, so to your point, maybe there are additional committees that we need to consider, that the community may actually would, would like to have a school board member sitting on as a non-voting or voting. I know as a non-voting member, I'll speak to this quickly, of the city of Ocala Planning and Zoning Board, not speaking of prior board members, it doesn't, but every time I go to those meetings, the commission is always like, you're the first board member that's ever come to these consistently. And, and it has been a very powerful opportunity to be a part of those on a monthly basis, where constituents are coming forth frequently about planning and zoning issues coming before the city, mentioning schools repeatedly. And, and that's happening in Bellevue, it's happening, you know, it's happening in the North Side, it's happening in the county, and so we do have non-voting seats on those commissions, and should be, you know, taking that opportunity to participate in those. So perhaps we need to just kind, I don't want to say table this, because I do want this to come forth in a, in a future conversation. I think it is something we can handle in a work session. We don't really have another work session in the month of December, but.
We have one on December 15th.
We do, perfect, December 15th, thank you. I was looking at the week prior, and, okay, so December 15th, maybe. In the interim, perhaps we can get a little bit more information, if there are additional committees we need to consider, and then what CASA and JJC are doing, if they're even committees we need to work with. In the meantime, we'll just kind of, we heard from Nancy, so I think those are, we're all in consensus, I believe, to put her in all those operations committees that are all lumped together right there. I can let the insurance committee folks know that Vice Chair Thrower will become their liaison. And then if you guys are comfortable with Ms. Conrad also being the student progression plan, we'll go ahead and, and let that happen. And then anything else, let's have future or additional conversation about it on December 15th. Does that work?
The local and.
Yeah, she's going to be all that in that operations section. Because the architect selection and site selection, both of those are going to be de facto until we know more. And we can have this conversation again next year, I mean, certainly. But at this point, I'm good with us just waiting until December 15th, if you all are.
Yeah, I think that'd be most appropriate.
Okay, great. So we do have three more sections of policy to discuss. Do we want to have that conversation today, or should we, I know our December 15th work session agenda is quite lengthy, so we certainly can't add it to that date. There might be another day that week we could add it, but we could not add it that, or no, we can't, you said 14 days. We don't have 14 days until January, so.
Can we approve the 1-0-0-0 through 5-0-0, or through the 6000s?
Well, you wouldn't really approve them, but I'm keeping track of the fact that up through, that's why I want to stop at the end of a section, whatever the section may be, because then I can say everything through the 5000s, the board has weighed in on. And in this case, the 6000.
6000s, right.
What, what I, but could we, could we put it to the board meeting, or no? Like, we, because I know you're 28 day notice, but could we put through the 6000s to a board meeting?
Yes, we could, and, and then just maintain adoptions to the, we'd still have to meet for the 7000s, 8000s.
Yes. I just know, because if, if we are not going to be able to meet on, if we don't do it today, we won't be able to meet on the sevens, eights, and nines until January. But also subsequently in January, we could vote to, on.
We could. What, what are the categories again, 7000, 8000, 9000? Because the only challenge, I, I appreciate the thought for sure, the only challenge is if any of those policies are crosswalked, that we. if any of those policies are crosswalked, that we may actually end up approving something in the 1, zeros through 6,000s that will contradict something in the 7,000, 8,000, and 9,000 categories.
And that's true of the 8,000s.
Okay.
So can we just go ahead and, it doesn't look like we're gonna be able to get it in, and I think some of us thought we were on a timed date today.
Sure, that we were finished.
Yeah, so I would suggest that we move it to a early meeting in January and do the 7, 8, and 9, and get it taken care of, and then pass it all together versus trying to piecemeal it, a piecemeal passage of these.
Do we want to go ahead and set a date now? Can we do that?
About that first Monday?
Well, we can't the first Monday because the--
District is closed.
--district is still closed the first Monday.
Well, no, I'm sorry, second Monday. Is that Martin Luther King Day?
No. The ninth is not Martin Luther King Day.
Why not? Let's shoot for the ninth.
January 9th? That works for me, does that work for everyone? Dr. Gullett, how does your calendar look on January 9th?
That gives 14 days, yeah.
Because it should be relatively short.
Yeah, I mean, I'd potentially an hour to two hours. I mean, based on, there's no guarantee, but based on how we--
Well, I'm setting all these for a full day unless you tell me otherwise.
Okay.
Because the whole point is that I'm trying to make sure that we have the opportunity to get through it and not be artificially limited.
Right.
Maybe he wants us to keep going.
I'll ask.
I will make arrangements to be here, I have a review out in the field that's rather time-sensitive and--
Is it an early morning review or--
Yes, and so I'll just, if we limit it to the morning, it'll be really helpful and then I can work around that.
Okay, so--
Or could we start later?
Would it help you if we started later?
No.
No.
Not that date.
Not with the afternoon conflicts, so I'll work around that.
Do we want to pick another date?
I was just gonna say, I mean, could we not, could we do the 4th? Like, can we do a Wednesday?
Does that work better? I know her calendar's always incredibly difficult.
What day are you looking at?
Wednesday, the 4th.
It's a professional development day, I believe.
That's good for me.
It's good for me.
I can make that work as long as we don't start earlier.
And I don't know about Ms. Thrower's availability, we're setting dates.
Right.
I'm meeting with the Golden Apple Academy, first thing in the morning at 7:00, but after that, I can make the morning work.
So let's tentatively hold January 4th at 9:00 a.m. And Elena or Attorney Powers, can you coordinate with Ms. Thrower and see if that works? And if not, let's alternatively have the option of January 12th, knowing that we would need to, would we start at 8:00? Would that be better for you, Dr. Gullett, or no, 9:00?
I just might be a few minutes late, I usually just meet wherever they--
January, January, sorry, 9th, I'm sorry, I'm looking at December and I'm, da-da-da-da-da. January 9th, so January 4th is the ideal date we're holding based on Ms. Thrower's availability. We'll just have Elena send us out a calendar invite today to let us know which date has been chosen, either January 4th or January 9th at 9:00 a.m. Okay. All right, perfect. So that's how we will continue our policies, 7,000, 8,000, 9,000. I'm gonna say again, is there any public comment on anything we've been talking about? Hearing none. I'll go around the room to see if you have additional commentary for us, Ms. Elena Martinez-Lopez.
No ma'am, thank you.
Dr. Gullett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I just wanted to mention that when we meet Thursday, Florida School Board Association did indicate it would go, it would last until 1:00 p.m., so 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for planning purposes. I also want to mention that, you mentioned briefly December 15th, that is a full day. I mean, I don't anticipate us finishing by noon with the agenda topics we have planned. Wanted to see if there were any conflicts, because if there are, then we might need to move an item. We just, it's a full agenda on the 15th. If you'd like, I can certainly go back and read for you what those topics are, if you'd give me a moment to bring my calendar back up. So we have currently scheduled, Achieved 2026 School III Updates, Southwest Localizer Zoning, Safe Schools Agreement, Board Meeting Times, and Legislative Priorities. Yes. So whatever the desire is of the board for our planning, we'll accommodate.
Perhaps, can we, let's see, it's a Thursday, so we should have MTI available for meals that day. Could we have a 30-minute lunch break in the, would that be good for you guys? And perhaps we can have the menu in advance and order in advance, so it's ready to go when we take a break. You guys just schedule that whenever date certain, or time certain, it doesn't matter if it's 11:30, 12 o'clock, whatever works best.
I'm sure Chef Nye would love to.
I mean, it's convenient, it works, it's a Thursday, they should be there, so if you guys can help us with the menu and all of that for that day and go ahead and put that schedule in place so that we'll have that break.
Based on community involvement, are we going to move that agenda around to prioritize certain topics, or are we going to go in the order that you just presented, Dr. Gullett?
We typically try to move them around if we can for public input.
I just, I think one of those is a little bit--
Yes, certainly.
--we'll probably draw a--
What we would typically do, just for overarching perspective, we always start with student achievement. We always start with what our students' needs are first, but due to the nature of public input, we sometimes move those things around.
I think that morning, you're gonna have quite a bit of input from the community around the Safe Schools Agreement, and do we want to have that crowd of people sitting here, waiting for us to get to them, because I think you have them right now currently third.
That's what I was getting to, yeah.
Yes, but the discussion of student achievement is always great to have first, because everybody needs to hear that.
I agree, but you ain't been here when they come on. I agree, I wholeheartedly agree and understand that, but sometimes you have to pivot. Sometimes we have to pivot.
I can pivot.
Can we make the decision day of? I think I would, and I know that we have done that also before, based on the number of people in the audience. I know we're all in potentially anticipating it, but until we get to that date, let's, I'm comfortable with us maybe making it second, or wait, student, were they both the updates, two items?
We have Southwest Localized Rezoning, and presentation is second. Again, we're flexible, but just as a matter of course, we always start with students and we adjust, of course, understanding that different topics bring about different visitors and guests and speakers.
So perhaps as we're collecting the public comments forms that morning, because we'll have to be filling out forms, we can make a judgment call on the number of public comments for one topic over another, because there may be rezoning public comment as well. And so we need to, I believe, make that call that morning based on the number of people who put in their forms early enough, at least that's--
What date are we talking about here?
December 15th.
Okay, and you're talking about making this a--
This is a full-day work session.
Okay.
And we're just talking about the agenda items for that day and how we might move that agenda around based on the people who are here from the community.
What is the time, what is the end time typically for a full day, or we do not set an end time? That's what I thought, okay.
So my purpose was to notify the board that we have quite a full agenda and prepare
for that, and if the board would like, we could move something, but we have a full agenda and I don't know when that end time might be unless the board decided to set an end time. Those topics, I expect will be quite lengthy.
I think it would be appropriate to be here as long as it takes to get through the specific topics.
I agree.
I agree.
I just don't want us to get to a, I don't want us to have people sitting out here waiting--
Right.
--to speak on a topic, or that we go into a topic and then we say, let's take lunch.
Right, right.
Because we've been on the bad side of that.
Right, we want to be--
It's better to deal with the public and get the public done and value everyone's time that's coming out here to those meetings. Whether it be moving 2 and 3 up to 1 and 2, it deals with the public. I understand our students, our business is students, but we also have to value people's time when they're coming--
But those topics off, also, are because of our, like, they're also students. Student safety is a part of the conversation, as is rezoning and transporting students. Lots of conversation gonna happen that day. And then our legislative priorities, I mean, I know that that, what we do need to concretely say what our legislative priorities are that day, because Mr. Christian has to print our little things for the January 6th event that we'll all be going to for the legislative delegation. So there, and there's multiple other things that I left off that she mentioned that are a part of that agenda that day. So I do think it's important that we have a break to eat, because we know how exhausted we get if we haven't had that opportunity. We may need to have more than one break just to stand up for a bit, but I don't know that I'm comfortable with us saying right now that we want to change the agenda other than gauging public comment forms that day. Because it may be that we have a huge number of people here, but they may just want to be here as participants in the audience as opposed to standing up and making public comment.
I think, Madam Chair, you have the authority to make that decision that morning.
Okay. Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Go through and do it.
No, I just heard back from Ms. Thrower, she is available on January 4th. Perfect, okay. So January 4th will be our next policy review update meeting, which will be policies 7,000, 8,000, and 9,000. Thank you, appreciate that, Elena. Okay, so--
So you have the authority to do that that morning.
Okay, perfect.
To ask us again and--
Yes, to alter the agenda that day. Okay, we will move forward in that direction then. Dr. Gullett, do you have anything else for us?
Nothing additional, thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Powers, did you have anything else for us today from legal?
Just that, I think that the board needs to discuss, or may wish to discuss, the Christmas Parade coming up. Have you guys--
Okay, certain. We, the intent is, I mean, we have been invited to participate in the Marion County Christmas Parade coming up this weekend. We were blessed with the opportunities to participate in both the Danellan and the Bellevue Parades, which we did, it was wonderful, we walked, we got all our steps in. We are gonna be the most fit board in Marion County, hold me to that, every other legislative body or every other municipality in this county, we are gonna be the most fit board, but carrying on with Reverend Cummings' tradition on that thought process. So the Christmas Parade is coming up on December 10th. Do I honestly not even have that? Yeah, there we go. I was like, is it not on my, yes, so do we have, need to have additional conversation about that? All of the board members are participated, are invited to participate. We do have a float that is provided for us annually from--
Environmental Express.
Florida Express Environmental, they're so gracious to do that for us. And the parade starts at 5:30, I believe that we should be there around the 3 to 3:30 timeframe if possible, and if not, then we can communicate one way or the other. I do believe Ms. Thrower is not gonna be present that day, she's gonna be representing us at another training. But is there any additional conversation we need to have about that, or is that good?
Wanted to bring it up so if anyone wanted to make sure to mention it, that we didn't have an issue not doing it in sunshine.
Okay, perfect. So December 10th at 5:30, your board will be participating in the Marion, or Ocala Christmas Parade. So, is that all from legal?
As to the Niola policies, what I've got here is we will notice for our January 4th, and we will be discussing at that time policies in the 7,000s, 8,000s, and 9,000s, and we're gonna hold all policies together and vote on them as one block, or get consensus on them at that time and make it to the next board meeting for vote.
And certainly if there are, as we're discussing them, anything that's crosswalked back, that we might make a change in one of those, then we'll leave that to you guys to make sure if we make a change in one that will, it will carry over to all of the others. We'll figure that out as we go, but thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. James, do you have any board comments today?
No, I've appreciated the spirit of our conversations today and keeping them student first, and I just continue to, gonna keep that top of mind as we focus on our conversations over the next few weeks, which I think could be full of spirit. And I, as a board member, want to stress the importance of making sure we stay focused on what our students need as a priority in all of the decisions that I know I will make as a board member, and I think this board feels very similarly.
Thank you. Ms. Conrad?
Yes, I just have a couple thank-yous that I really wanted meant to say at my swearing-in ceremony, and I got a little excited and didn't get them out. So onboarding has been quite the process, and there's been a lot of district staff and school administrators, legal department, that has spent a lot of time trying to catch me up on things that I need to know, and I just wanted to say, I really appreciate your time, your patience, and the energy that you put into getting us ready to start on the board. I also wanted to give a shout-out to Ginger Cruz and Jennifer Pollard for our principal and assistant principal of the year, it's very exciting. Ginger was actually my instructor at CF, very beginning, we won't say how many years ago, but congratulations to both of them, we're looking forward to their journey as they move forward. Thank you.
Wonderful. Reverend Cummings?
Listen, I just want to say welcome to both Dr. James and Ms. Conrad for being on the board. We had, we just come off a great week, last week, of FSBA training, so we're looking forward to going forward and doing some great things. Today was an indicator of us being on track and doing what we need to do, so I don't have any other comments. Congratulations to our chairs, thank you for navigating us today, and let's get done what we need to get done.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings, and thank you again for the opportunity and the blessing and the honor it is to serve as your chair this year. I too echo the comments of Reverend Cummings that the collaborative nature that we experienced today, I hope is just a wonderful sign of things to come. I am grateful that we have the great board that is dedicated to working hard, to ensuring that we are putting students first, helping every student succeed. As our tagline and vision say, welcome again to both of you and just appreciate the time we spent at Florida School Board Association Training and looking forward to our training on Thursday, as well at the CEP. So that should be a great time for us to get in some real training together as a board, not with everybody else, just actually as a board together. So thank you all, I think-- Yes, sir. Yes.
You'll have the meeting Wednesday.
Yes, thank you for that, yes. There is, as a reminder to the board, thank you, I'm looking at it right here and I just skipped right over it, as a reminder to the board, on Wednesday, we will be at the Southeast Livestock Pavilion, I believe, though it does say TBD on our calendars, I believe it's at Southeast Livestock Pavilion, at least that's where it was before.
Email from Ms. Drops.
Thank you, thank you. Southeast Livestock Pavilion, the auxiliary building there, that we will have our interlocal meeting with the other municipalities, with the county, inviting us to attend and participate, and we had the opportunity to also submit some agenda items potentially, and I know our team is gonna be presenting there. So yes, on Wednesday, so we're gonna see each other multiple times this week, so it'll be a great week as a Marion County School Board, we're gonna represent you well, and thank you for that reminder. So until then, we will see you all on Wednesday at the Southeast Livestock Pavilion for our interlocal meeting. And with that, we are adjourned at 1:27 p.m.